Counselors, please take your seats. I'd like to call to order the February 1st, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 and that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence all devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call.
Counselors, Beadham Bender.
Present.
Crocker James.
Present.
Colum. Dagewine. Flores.
Present.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Ebert.
Present.
Levek.
Present.
Mary. Schnep, here. Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley. Wallace.
Here.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. President, I'd ask that we take a moment to recognize Bill Cronin, past president of the High Enough Civic Association who's passed lately, and our respects go out to his family.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite up the Barnstable School Committee to join us. We've got new mics, I don't know if they're any better than the old ones, though. Mr. Chairman, would you like to open your meeting?
I would like to call to order the 2018 February 1st School Committee meeting. Madam Chair, could you please do roll call? I mean, Madam Clerk.
Chris Joyce.
Present.
Stephanie Ellis.
Present.
Patrick Murphy.
Present.
And Mike Judge.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and as many of you are aware, we had a vacancy on the School Committee back in December. And in accordance with our town charter, it calls for a joint meeting with the School Committee and the Town Council to fill that vacancy, which is for the full four-year term. Subcommittee met just a few weeks ago. We had applicants that were interviewed and vetted, and three finalists were selected by that Subcommittee, which consisted of School Committee members and Town Council members. And the three finalists are here tonight, and they'll each be interviewed approximately about 15 minutes. And then at that time, we'll have a vote, a roll call vote, first the School Committee and then the Town Council to select who will fill the seat on the School Committee. We're going to interview in alphabetical order. The finalists are Susan Conley, Barbara Dunn, and Edith LeBron. So at this time, Mr. Chair, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Did a nice job.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite our first finalist up, Suzanne Conley. Just so the Council members and the School Committee members know, we have three questions, which were vetted in the committee, and we'll ask those three questions, allow for one or two follow-up questions, but in the interest of time, we're going to kind of cut it there. Welcome. Everybody came out to see you tonight.
Yeah, this is a little intimidating.
Thank you for being here, it was wonderful to meet you in the previous meeting we had, so I appreciate you taking the time to be here. So, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you for the first question, or quickly, there's three, there are going to be three questions.
Okay.
And then I will open it up for, you know, one or two follow-up questions, and then at that point, there'll be, you know, the end of the interview, so maybe, you know, 10, 15 minutes here, so.
That's not bad.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, nice to see you.
Hi.
From a governance, finance, and operations perspective, what do you see as the strengths and weaknesses of Barnstable Public Schools, and how would you impact the School Committee decision-making process?
Well, from what I've read, what I've seen, what I've studied, I see a district that is, that has a very strong governing team, and I would include, you know, by definition, of course, the School Committee, the Superintendent, and those who report directly to her as they report occasionally. I've just been so impressed with the forward thinking that I see going on with respect to the adoption, the early adoption of such things as, you know, MTSS and, you know, the push-in for English language learners. I was just really impressed reading the reports of the Superintendent to the School Committee. So it's a very, you know, also the social-emotional learning, which I think you are all early adopters of. You know, I'm more familiar with districts up north-a-way, and, you know, they're so excited to be learning about all this right now, and I know you've been working on this for a while, so what I'm seeing is that, you know, governance team that is making sure that the look, the look is forward, that we're adopting practices, best practices, so that all children are allowed to maximize their learning here in Barnstable. The finance piece, I've done due diligence, but it's a little bit like going down a rabbit hole trying to figure it out as an outsider. It's very complex, of course, you have a pretty big budget, it's a pretty big district, but it seems to be, you know, I looked at all of the financials, and it looks like it's that too is very well-run in conjunction with the town administration, so it just looks like a very well-run district, and that's my impression as an outsider. What I think I would bring to that governance team is a seasoned, experienced understanding of what a governance team is supposed to do. And I used to love an old phrase that we used when we discussed governance in my prior life, which was noses in, hands off, and I think that defines the way a good governance team operates, in that it has eyes open, always making sure that the, you know, the T's across, the I's are dotted, but understanding that the administration should do the work of implementing the policies set by the School Committee, that is, developing the regulations that make those policies work. And I think a governance team that's functioning properly has that kind of perspective, that we're here to oversee, we know that you're the experts, and we're going to just make sure that you're doing your jobs to the best of your ability, and we'll do what we can to support you. So I think that understanding of how governance works is critical for a School Committee member. I don't, I think I'll just stop there on that count. I probably didn't answer your entire question, is there a... You said finance, governance, and...
From a governance, finance, and operations perspective.
Operations perspective. Well, one of the things I was very well-versed in was facilities and understanding the development, rehab, and also development of new plans for new facilities. So I think I'd understand that whole process and how long that takes and how complicated that can be. Operationally, running schools is very difficult from so many perspectives, the building perspective, the, you know, even the legal environment becomes operational at some point, so I think I'd bring solid understandings in the day-to-day running of schools. And I think School Committee members really have to serve as, you know, collectively as a sounding board for the administration when problems arise, and that's the function that would be critical there.
Thank you, Susan.
Good evening, I have the next question for you.
Okay.
As a School Committee member responsible for demonstrating leadership for all students, including both Barnstable Public Schools and our Horace Mann Public Charter School, what do you believe both have done well, and what do you feel needs improvement? And in your opinion, how do you make a good school system a great school system?
Well, I'm sorry, what have both done well? Are you talking about the public schools and then the community?
Right, because we have the Horace Mann school within our district.
Yes.
So what have both our public school and the public charter school done well?
Well, I think, well, let's talk about the public schools first. Again, I probably already alluded to this, it's so clear, reading minutes of the School Committee, reading reports of Superintendent Mayo Brown, that there's no sense that we're going to sit back and just, you know, let things be as they are, a kind of oh-well attitude. There's such a push to meet the requirements of accountability that are placed on any school district in Massachusetts. So when I look at your report card, for example, and then I look at the strategic initiatives developed to better the performance of each and every schools, I think you have two schools with a score of one on the report card. They're just really solid plans about how do we get from B to A, how do we improve ourselves, and what I've seen is the willingness in the public schools to adopt some methodologies that, quite frankly, are very time and personnel-intensive. They're not easy, it's not easy to say to teachers, "We're going to do these things called learning walks," which means we'll have teachers go around the school and, you know, try to learn, you know, who's doing what great, and try to incorporate that, that takes time, that takes energy, that takes patience and understanding and open minds. That's not easy. The whole multi-tiered support structure that makes sure all children are learning what you want them to learn, similarly, you know, takes a diverse population of classroom personnel, so to make the commitment to do that, to write up those strategic initiatives, to adopt best practices and implement them, takes a lot of energy. And I know from my experience that in some school settings, you know, whether it's at K-12 or even higher ed, folks are very resistant to accountability and, you know, being held accountable for improving performance, but here, what I see is a willingness to really do the hard work. And in fact, as I read and read and read and all the curriculum mapping that's gone on, all I could think was, what a lot of work, and so I find that very impressive. I really don't feel, I'm sorry to say this, but I don't feel like I can comment very much on the Horace, the Barnstable Community Horace Mann Charter School. I know there are issues there related to funding, I believe, and also a plan in place, but I'm not as well-versed in what's going on there as I am with the other schools.
So just to follow up with that.
Sure.
What do you think, what do you, so you've said what we've done well, what do you feel needs improvement? If you can maybe comment on that.
Well, I think... I think what needs improvement is better outcomes on MCAS, and that's, you know, it's clear that the folks running the schools and the Superintendent believe that the improvement in MCAS is just necessary, and, you know, they, she's, they have developed plans, they look like very collaboratively-developed plans to improve that performance. It's all about children's learning, you know, and that they maximize their learning and perform as best they can, and that looks to be what the focus is, and that's what, that's where my mind would be as a School Committee member, what can I do to support your efforts to help these kids do better on these tests?
All right, I have the last question, and this can also kind of serve as maybe an opportunity for a closing statement from you.
Sure.
Why do you want to be on the School Committee?
Why do I want to be on the...
And what quality and attributes will you bring to the position?
Okay. Well, I retired two years ago from a very busy job, and I enjoyed these first two years very much, setting up my home in Osterville, but I need to do more than golf. Barnstable has a wonderful golf program, by the way, and I just started to feel as though my education and my experience were a bit going to waste, and I started looking around for a way to get involved in my community. And I joined the Osterville Village Association, and I went to some meetings there, which I found fascinating, and then I, when I saw this opportunity, I realized that I had experience in educational governance that could be put to use, and that I really could, I think, bring a leadership style that I had developed over the years that's very collaborative. And I enjoy being part of a leadership team, I enjoy talking, but not too much, I enjoy listening just as much as I enjoy talking, and I enjoy being with people, putting heads together, and figuring something out together at this level, so I think that's what I'd bring, it's why I want to do this, because I just, I miss community involvement. In my prior community, I was, for example, the Chair of the United Way of Tri-County, and I was the Chair of the Board of the Metro West Leadership Organization, and I really, really miss that community involvement that I come so much to enjoy, so this would combine two aspects of my career, I think, in this position.
Thank you very much. Does any, anyone have a follow-up question? No? All right. Well, I really want to thank you for putting your name forward.
Sure.
It's definitely been a pleasure to meet you, and...
Likewise.
No matter the outcome of tonight, I hope you would consider either way staying involved, you know, with the school system, I know the School Committee would feel the same way.
Thank you.
If there's opportunities to stay involved, not dependent on the outcome of tonight, so thank you again for being here.
Thank you so much, thank you for considering me, thank you.
All right, we'll have our second finalist, Barbara Dunn. It's a long walk from the green room. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you want to just pull the mic over and make sure the green light's on there.
That's it, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. We have three questions, and then I'll open it up for one or two follow-up from the rest of the committee up here, so we'll get started with the first question.
Okay.
Good evening, nice to see you. From a governance, finance, and operations perspective, what do you see as the strengths and weaknesses of Barnstable Public Schools, and how would you impact the School Committee decision-making process?
So I think the, my background, being in the school trenches for so many years, it's given me an opportunity to see the strengths of the programs provided, and I, in my recent years, I think the programs that have been brought into the district, the social-emotional learning programs, the MTSS program, responsive classroom, things like that, I think the programs they're adopting are phenomenal, and I think that's a huge strength. I think there's a sense of progressive movement, and I think that's a real positive. I think the challenge is, the budget is a finite amount of money, and we want to provide our children with the best possible education, highest-quality education, and I think within constraints, as a teacher, I've thought about what that will be like if I were on the School Committee, and I've retired and stepped out of my teaching shoes, so I think I can make that adjustment. I do see areas that I think need more attention, that could save costs to the district as far as resource and choices and resources, so I think for me, researching and making sure that the programs and resources brought in will serve the best needs of the students while using the taxpayer dollars appropriately is the focus.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah.
Hi, Barbara, I have the next question for you. As a School Committee member responsible for demonstrating leadership for all students, including both Barnstable Public Schools and our Horace Mann Public Charter School, what do you believe both have done well, and what do you feel needs improvement? And in your opinion, how do you make a good school system a great school system?
So the first word that comes to my mind is community in making a great school system. Back when I went for my masters, my thesis was working together, schools, home, and community, and that's an enormous part of my philosophy, is bringing the community into the schools so they're invested in what's happening in the schools, and I think that makes for a strong school district, is having the community invested and understanding what's happening. I was involved with the Horace Mann Charter School before it became Barnstable United, and I think that is a bit of a challenge, the charter schools. I know I found it a little bit of a difficult dynamic to have the administration within the charter school able to make decisions, yet we were still part of the same district, so there felt like an inconsistency there, so I see that as a challenge. I love to see that the idea of innovative schools is being looked at, because I see that as being a strong potential, but I think Barnstable, as far as strengths as a district, is really looking ahead and creating the strongest possible, as I said, programs and quality education that they can provide for the students. Yeah.
All right, I have the last question, and this can also be an opportunity to work in a closing statement if you choose.
Okay.
Why do you want to be on the School Committee? And what quality and attributes would you bring to the position?
So I retired last June and had a busy summer, and then in the fall, things started quieting down for me, and I was really feeling a void and a need to take on a new venture. I really have always, for the last 30-plus years, been involved with the Barnstable Schools, both first as a parent and then moving on to my role as a teacher. And then one day, the paper was there, and there was an opening on the School Committee, and this big light bulb came on, that that was my new venture, and I feel incredibly excited about the possibilities of the perspective I can bring to the School Committee. I think being in the trenches over many, many years, I've watched Barnstable Schools grow and change, and I think that I, as I had mentioned earlier, because of my recent involvement, have a pretty solid understanding of the current programs. I think it's huge, I think the residents in Barnstable, whether it's families, other teachers especially, the tax constituency that maybe don't have kids, would find the benefits of having a teacher, a former teacher, involved and having a voice and a perspective. I've learned, I think I have a deep understanding of the, of how to multitask and manage the demands of differentiated instruction, a change in curriculum, collaborating with staff, just, I think my perspective would be huge. The other piece, I would say, as a strength, is the person I am. I think when I look at the core values of the Barnstable School District, I feel like that's me. Commitment, collaboration, and community are who I am as a person. My commitment to children is evident. I think people that know me would say my ability to collaborate is a huge strength. I'm a firm believer in listening, if people feel listened to, they feel a sense of belonging and validation. And then, of course, community, as I mentioned earlier, is a huge piece of who I am. My classroom, I think, was a mini-model of a community. The beginning of the year, the kids came in and didn't really know each other, and through the responsive classroom program and things like that, as we moved through the year, there was such a sense of community, and I firmly believed in setting the bar high, and that all kids can step up to that bar if they feel a sense of self-worth, and I think I did that in my little classroom community, and so I would hope to play a part in pulling our community together to be invested in our schools. And I do have a little closing statement. Thank you. I put this in writing just because I really want to be able to express my exact thoughts. I consider my calm demeanor and ability to articulate my ideas and opinions a strength, but given this unique forum, I want to be sure that I have clearly expressed my message as to why this position is a perfect fit for both me and the district by sharing from my heart. When I moved here over 30 years ago, it was the Barnstable School District that connected me with our community, first as a parent of two young children, then I went on to teach in the elementary schools for 20 years. Over those years, I continued to do what I love and believe is one of my most important strengths, building relationships with people, colleagues, administrators, parents, and of course, the members of our community, one of our greatest resources. All knew they were always welcome in my classroom. I taught, and I also learned. My philosophy is that individual growth is achieved through raising the bar while allowing students to see their own potential by recognizing their self-worth. My experience gave me the confidence to be a decision-maker in what I know best, the world of education. If I had it to do again, I would not change a thing. In June, I retired from teaching, I soon realized I was yearning to explore a new challenge and continue to make a difference to the children of our community. I can't think of a better place to do that than by serving on the Barnstable School Committee. I'm grateful for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to see if there's any follow-up questions, Council Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Barbara, good to see you again.
Hi, nice to see you also.
Just a quick question. In response to Chairman Joyce's question number one, you suggested that you believed that there were areas that needed more attention, and that you felt that there was also a need for reallocation of resources. Could you just expand on that, where those areas are and where you would reallocate as a School Committee member?
Sure. The one area that comes to my mind is, the curriculum's constantly changing, and we as a district don't have total control over that, the state, you know, and the standards dictate that to a certain extent. My frustration came when, for example, a reading program would be piloted, and then the next year, thousands of dollars were spent on the program, and within three, four years, it was decided that we were on to another program, and all those books were stacked up in the closet, and that was such a frustration for me. First of all, the money is a huge piece of it, I feel like I'm not sure, that's a challenge, because resources are always changing. I feel like I'm not sure that's a challenge, because resources are always changing, and maybe it just takes a slower process before you spend the money to adopt something and make sure you're going to stay with it. But I also think the best educators are masters of the topic they teach, and we're constantly changing the resources we're using, which we need to do to a certain extent. But the money that's spent there isn't always necessarily the best for our instructors. And then, of course, there's always, you know, teaching supplies and things like that. My, in my heart, the student-pupil ratio is huge, and if I have to look at a budget, that would be the place that would be the hardest for me. My largest class was twenty-seven, and every student over twenty was like adding five more. And I obviously recognize that the budget may be limited. I would look for compromise on that to provide support staff rather than more teachers, things like that. But those are some examples. Yeah.
Anyone else have a follow-up? No? All right, well, thank you, Barbara. I really appreciate you putting your name forward and going through this process.
Thank you.
And I'll say to all the candidates tonight, regardless of the outcome tonight, I hope you'll, you know, stay involved on some level with the school system.
Absolutely.
We really appreciate you being here.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we'll have our third and final finalist. Edith Lebron, please. Good to see you again.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Appreciate being invited back.
Very good. All right. So we are going to have three questions tonight, and then I'll allow for one or two, you know, follow-up from the committee up here. So we're going to kick things off with the Chair of the School Committee.
Nice to see you again. From a governance, finance, and operations perspective, what do you see as the strengths and weaknesses of Barnstable Public Schools, and how would you impact the school committee decision-making process?
I think that one of the strengths are the students and the support that the students get in instruction. I think that we have a really wonderful teaching staff that addresses the student's social, emotional learning, as well as the level of tiered instruction. That level of awareness, I think, that people bring to the instruction of the students every single day is a major strength. I think the leadership in the district is a major strength as well. When I've looked at the goals and the objectives, and the type of steps that people have put into place to achieve those goals, I think that they're noteworthy. Having come from other districts and looked at that across multiple of levels, I think that the awareness of the student needs being at the core are really critical and important. I think that the school committee, along with the town council, have really looked at setting priorities and really looking what those priorities are, and have allocated the budget in a way that will support those priorities. There's a lot of thought process that appears to have gone into that, so that if the superintendent or the school committee looks at something that we really need, that it comes to the council and there's support for that. I think that what I could bring to that is, again, a wealth of experience from other districts, looking at how some of those plans and pieces have been put into place. I've done a lot of work with budgets and working with zero-based budgets. We have to set priorities based on that rather than on the needs of the students. And I think that that's a really important piece that we have to look at. I think in terms of the government, in terms of transparency to the community, there's very good communication. There are multiple levels, that the communication goes out to the parents and to the community, from the website to the minutes being available, to the open budget hearings, that there's a lot of participation that goes on. And I really feel like those are pieces that I can, again, add to as part of a team, looking at those pieces. Looking at policy review, I've regularly had to work with teams of people reviewing policies, creating new policies, and then helping to enact them, not just as a principle, as part of a leadership team, but working from central office as well. When I was in human resources, we had to look at some updated policies and looking at how do you do that in a really purposeful way. So I think those are some of the pieces that I would like to be able to be part of contributing to with the rest of the committee.
Thank you.
So I have the next question for you. As a school committee member responsible for demonstrating leadership for all students, including both Barnstable Public Schools and our Horace Mann Public Charter School, what do you believe both have done well, and what do you feel needs improvement? And in your opinion, how do you make a good school system a great school system?
If I look at the strength in the school district right now, I look at the graduates and where the graduates from Barnstable High School are going, and how the graduates are viewed when they get to the colleges. Just looking at the colleges they're accepted to, and how well they do, and complete the colleges, I think that that's a real strength that the school district has. I think that it would be wonderful if we could have more students going in with advanced standing, advanced credits. I know we have a lot of students already going in with some advanced standings from the scores in the AP exams. I'd like to see as many of our students possible not have to do their freshman year, very similar to the way that the students come out of certain IB schools, with maybe having their freshman year under their belt. I'd love to see more of our students out of the high school being able to opt out of their freshman year because they've had the scores on their AP exams in the three, four, or five. And along that line, that means we need to grow those programs and strength. So again, continuing with looking at the pre-AP program in our intermediate school, and having more students have a really good understanding about that, helping and supporting the parents to know, how do we prepare our children to be ready for those kinds of courses? The type of rigor, that it's not just busy work and more time, but it's about the kind of critical thinking and thought and expression that go into that. And I think that that is something that's being built in the elementary schools. When I look at how the students are scoring on the newest iteration of MCAS and the previous years of MCAS, I think that the students are doing well, and they're doing better all the time. There's always margin for improvement, because we want to get more percentage of our children into proficient and advanced, you know, unless out of the, you know, the almost meeting the standard, we want to get them to meeting and exceeding the standard, so that they're really much more prepared to be able to do that kind of rigor when they get to high school. And again, it's starting right in pre-K and kindergarten with what does good work look like? What does that standard look like? So students have a model to reach for and achieve, and I think that that is going on. I think there's always that margin for improvement.
All right, I have the last question, and this can also be an opportunity for a closing statement as well. Why do you want to be on the school committee? And what qualities and attributes will you bring to the position?
Okay. I've sat in a lot of different seats in education. I started off as an English teacher in a middle school back in Everett in nineteen-seventy-four. I ran and developed a school in a psychiatric hospital that I did for eight years. I have been a guidance counselor and a guidance director in a very small high school, where I knew every single student by name and a lot more about their families than I wished I had known. And then was able to really come into Barnstable at a time when they had a critical need with two middle schools, and took over the leadership of a middle school that I really loved, and then had to watch them blend back into one middle school. And then going from there to a year in a charter school, to just see how business was done in a different way, and realizing that that necessarily wasn't the way that I thought education should be for everyone. I feel that charter schools can be a wonderful learning laboratory, but they shouldn't be the be-all and the end-all, and that's not what the original design was for. And then finally ending up my career in a very, very large urban district in Lowell with a capacity of jobs. I've looked at school governance and leadership from one side of the desk, if you will. I really have an understanding of how complicated it is on the other side of the desk, and I think that I would love to have the opportunity to help to take some of my hands-on practical experience and apply it in the more, it's not theoretical, it's more like a practicable level that has a larger and greater reach than just what I have. I mean, the only seat I didn't have was superintendent, because I never wanted to give up being involved with students, and I feel like the school committee still gives you that ability to be involved with students in a way that has a much broader and more meaningful impact. It's not just a particular grade level or particular school, it's really a lifelong impact for every student who walks into the doors of the Barnstable Public Schools in preschool or kindergarten, and then walks across that stage of graduation. And I would really like to have the opportunity to be able to do that.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any follow-ups? No? All right, well, thank you so much for being part of the process. We truly appreciate you putting your name in, and I've told everyone, regardless of the outcome tonight, I hope you'll consider staying involved with the school system here in Barnstable. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know everyone received resumes of all the finalists ahead of the meeting, so everyone's had a chance to review those. We've had an opportunity to hear from each finalist. So now would be the time to have some discussion. I think it would be appropriate maybe to hear from the school committee first. Mr. Chairman, if there's any discussion?
So being on the search committee and the, you know, the first round of interviews, you know, I think any one of these candidates, we would be proud to serve with. They all bring a different perspective. You know, the thing that I think is unique, each one of them has an educational background, and that's exciting for us, I think. You know, there's four of us here, and I think that is exciting. We, you know, it's hard, you know, you listen to the first one, you listen to the second one, you listen to the third one, and they each bring a nugget, I think, that would help us. But, you know, I think at the end of the day, we have to pick a candidate that's going to work, you know, that's not going to be afraid to work, that's going to be collaborative, and is going to bring a different perspective to us, you know, to what we have right now. So I'm still, my brain's kind of like a little loud, there's like a mouse going around in here right now, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Anyone else have any comments? I think Councilor Flores?
Being on that initial committee with fellow counselors and school committee members, I would agree with Chairman Joyce that all of these candidates have strong backgrounds. They all bring, if you will, I believe, a certain set of skill levels that I think would be a great addition to the school committee overall, whether it's our first candidate, second, or third. So ultimately, I want to be sure that, you know, we as a town council work collaboratively, if you will, with the school committee. It's your committee, so I'm hoping that whomever you ultimately choose, we can come to a unanimous vote so that the person coming in does feel welcome, does feel comfortable, and you can help move towards implementing all of the goals that the superintendent and the staff have established. But all good candidates, all qualified, but each with a different set of, I think, skill sets that only you as a school committee, being intimately involved on a regular basis, probably understand better than we do as a council what you really need.
Mr. Murphy?
I just want to thank the subcommittee that did this work. You've brought forward three fantastic candidates, and I know some of the folks that were not brought forward were terrific candidates. It shows that Barnstable, the community of Barnstable really values education, and we have a heck of a farm team out there if anybody is interested in running down the road. So not that I'm encouraging it right now, but thank you very much for your work. Fabulous, fabulous work.
Yeah, I'll echo that as well, as being part of the subcommittee, we were very pleased with the number of candidates that we ended up with, and the quality of the candidates that we were able to speak with and review the resumes. And again, I think any one of the three finalists here would make a, you know, great addition to the school committee. So it is a difficult choice, but I hope all three will, you know, stay involved sincerely. Any other comments or discussion? Councilor Cullum?
I was on the subcommittee as well, and I, the candidates that we had were so varied in qualification, but the one thing that they weren't varied in was enthusiasm for the job, which doesn't pay. It's like, you know, I mean, it's a hard job, and it requires a lot of work, and the school committee's demanding, and they expect you to dig in immediately, and there's, you know, there's room for a lot of lively discussion and disagreement. And, you know, I think out of the candidates we have, for me, anyway, I look for the governance aspect is super important, because it's a different position. And, you know, it's your board, and I respect that, and I'll follow your lead. But for me, a fresh voice is a really important thing, and so I'll leave it at that. But I was really impressed with the candidates, and now that we have your name and number, you're not getting anywhere. I'm sure Cindy's out there giving them applications for boards and committees right now. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Vice Chairman Ellis?
I'll just make a quick comment. I too was on the subcommittee, and I was so proud to sit and interview eleven very qualified candidates, and very proud to think that eleven people in the town have just applied for a position that pays no money. And it's a lot of work, it's a lot of commitment, and you put a lot of heart into this position. So that, to me personally, says that the current school committee, the current school district, the current superintendent is doing a pretty darn good job in the eyes of the community if eleven people have stepped up to potentially take this volunteer position. You know, as Councilor Cullum said, that there was a variety of people from different backgrounds. We had parents, we had business folks within the community, we had teachers, educators. It is not, it is by chance that we have three educators in front of us. It was not purposeful. We were not set out to pick a certain person of their background, qualifications, et cetera, but these three absolutely rose to the top. We were initially asked as a subcommittee to bring forward about two candidates, and we simply could not choose, because they are, as you all have just witnessed, are so incredibly dynamic. And I will be very proud to work with any one of these three candidates tonight. And thank you to the, all the people that applied, and thank you to everybody that's taken the time to invest in the school committee tonight.
Any other comments? Mr. Judge?
Mine is going to be more as a resident. It warms my heart as a resident to see that the town council and school committee can get together and come up with such fantastic, because when it comes down to the end of the day, it's for the kids. And I would like to thank everybody on the subcommittee, because obviously you all worked together and came up with three phenomenal candidates. So as a resident, it, thank you, to get together and come up with who will be a fantastic colleague. But that's more from my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to move the question? I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question? And that is unanimous. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call of the school committee?
Okay, starting with the school committee. Chris Joyce.
Barbara Dunn.
Stephanie Ellis.
Barbara Dunn.
Patrick Murphy.
Barbara Dunn.
Mike Judge.
Barbara Dunn.
Thank you. It's going to be a total vote for everyone, and now I'm going to start with the counselors. Councilor Beedenbender.
Barbara Dunn.
Barbara Dunn.
Cullum.
Barbara Dunn.
Flores.
Barbara Dunn.
Rap Grissette.
Barbara Dunn.
Ebert.
Barbara Dunn.
Levek.
Barbara Dunn.
Neary.
Barbara Dunn.
Paula Schnep.
Barbara.
Steinhilde.
Barbara Dunn.
And Wallace.
Barbara Dunn.
That is unanimous.
So you'll have a new member with you at your February meeting. And when is that meeting?
Next week.
Next Wednesday. So we'll jump, we'll make sure she gets sworn in before the meeting. So again, I want to thank everyone that's been involved in this process. It started, you know, a month, almost two months ago. It's been a pleasure working with the school committee to fill this very important position, so. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, do I have a motion to adjourn your meeting?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting. All in favor? The meeting is closed.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we can move some of the extra chairs out of the way. All right, before we get into public comment, I'd like to invite Lynn Poyant to join me down at the podium. We have a special presentation.
I wanna thank President Steinheilber for allowing me to be part of this recognition of our town clerk, Ann Quirk. Ann was recently named an Athenian Fellow from the Athenian Leadership Society. The Athenian oath was recited by citizens of Athens, Greece over 2,000 years ago. It is frequently referenced by civic leaders in modern times as a timeless code of civic responsibility. The oath says, "We will never bring disgrace on this city by an act of dishonesty or cowardness. We will fight for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will revere and obey the city's laws and we will do our best to incite a like reverence and respect in those above us who are prone to annul them or set them at naught. We will strive unceasingly to quicken the public sense of civic duty. Thus, in all these ways, we will transmit this city not only, not less, but greater and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." Ann is one of four town clerks in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to receive this designation. And she is one of 10 town clerks in the region that represents New England and the state of New York. And I would like to turn this over to President Steinheilber.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Are you getting this in the minutes? This might be the longest paragraph in the whole thing, right? Just wanna read this plaque here. "The Barnstable Town Council does hereby congratulate Ann Quirk, CMC, on her induction into the Athenian Leadership Society. The Athenian Leadership Society is an international academy for and of municipal clerks worldwide. The society was established in 2005 to recognize and honor municipal clerks who seek personal and professional improvement as an Athenian leader in her chosen profession, in their chosen profession. The highest achievement for society members is to be inducted as a fellow with all rights, privileges, and recognition bestowed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. By these hands and with this seal, we welcome to the academy extending the prestige and recognition as a fellow of the Athenian Leadership Society." And it's signed by me as the town council president, so congratulations. Congratulations again. All right, we're gonna move into public comment. And I'm gonna ask that any comments that are related to an item later that has a public hearing, that those comments be held for that public hearing that'll take place during the joint meeting with the planning board. So, any other subject matters, fair game. Anyone wish to speak? Please come forward, state your name, sign in, and please limit your time to three minutes. Welcome.
How about now? Can you hear me now? Good evening, Terrence Omen Marstens Mills, Acting Chair of the Hyannis Historic District Commission, AKA HHDC. I'm here tonight to cite the new complexity of the regulatory review process that involves the HHDC. I've served as a dedicated volunteer on the commission for the past four years and thoroughly enjoyed the experience until early last year. Problems arose when we were asked to review applicants for regulatory agreements outside our normal review process as they sought letters of support rather than certificates of appropriateness specified in the town code in Chapter 40(c) of the Mass General Laws. Commissioners sought guidance from legal staff, our council liaison, and council subcommittee reviewing the process. Not one of our requests received the courtesy of a response. Our liaison, Jim Tinsley, had, has never attended a single meeting in four years, yet he was reappointed in December. Why? While we've met with a developer of the proposed dockside project four times, we were allowed only a single meeting for Seacaptain's Row. The developer made false and misleading statements at that meeting and the planning department withheld relevant correspondence documenting the importance of the five National Register homes to be demolished. Our majority view was grossly misrepresented to the planning board by Elizabeth Jenkins and as a result, they voted to approve the demolition of the National Register homes in violation of all of our town and regional policies and plans. The deceit and misrepresentations from the developer and planning department left me questioning everything they said and did. When we then received a formal application from the same developer to rehab the Furman Building at 255 Main Street, I noticed that Cape Bill was listed as the owner of the property, but it was not the owner. I asked that the application be withdrawn and resubmitted or that the town attorney be consulted. In response, the applicant submitted an extensively redacted and curiously long purchase and sale agreement along with an unnotarized glorified permission slip from the legal owner of the property with crossed-out signatures and signatures that did not match, plus a quitclaim deed that had not been filed, notarized, or dated. With no ruling from the town attorney and the applicant's refusal to resubmit, I did not vote in favor of the project and the vote failed to pass. Had he simply resubmitted a proper application, it would have had our prompt approval. The subsequent appeals committee hearing did not include all of the materials we received for review. But, again, several documents were withheld from consideration and we did not receive proper notice of the meeting by mail. The appeals committee chose to land-based commissioners who voted no, including false allegations and personal attacks in our absence.
I'll wrap it up in 30 seconds.
Throughout the town schizophrenic regulatory agreement process, it seems that no one is accountable for anything and town government is like a ship without a rudder. Without consideration for preservation, you may as well dissolve the Hyannis Historic District Commission and replace it with an architectural review board since we no longer act in concert with town codes or our intended function to preserve the town's rare and valuable heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, go ahead. Don't be shy out there. Going once, going twice.
Hi, I'm Michelle Scarlett. I'm from Centerville and I'm here to support Vineyard Winds and renewable energy. I feel like the biggest threat we face right now is climate change. And you can see it on the Cape with the storm, the recent storm with the flooding, the flooding of the basements, the erosion of the beach. And a large, and in large part, this is due to fossil fuel. I think what we need to do is move to renewable energy. I think it can bring jobs to the region. I think that there are educational institutions that can really promote that. I know with the new wind farm that there are some problems. They're talking about with laying the cable, disrupting the shellfish beds. But, I've talked to some environmentalists and while they are problems, they're short-term. And I think that we have some really smart people on the Cape. I think we have some incredible organizations that can address these things. And I think it's an issue that it's hard to deal with alone. And I'm hoping that as a community, we can work together and address this. I have daughters. I wanna be able to lead the Cape in the best way we can. So, I'm here to promote renewable green energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, go ahead, let's go.
Is this a time to speak about the?
The GIZ? No, there'll be a public hearing later tonight. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment as a council responds to public comment. All right, seeing none, we'll move right into Town Manager Communications. Town Manager Mark Els.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mark, good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Mark Els, Town Manager. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY 2019 as scheduled. We're wrapping up capital and moving quickly into operating budget at this time. We have our FY 2019 rate hearing scheduled, scheduled for February 13th at 10:00 a.m. in Town Hall here in this room. Those will be posted online. I've given you all a copy, both of the noticed and the proposed fee changes. Typically, we will take those under review. Those would be fees implemented on July 1st. And typically, we hold the hearing and then I hold a period of 30 days open post-hearing for any additional comment that might come in. Then we take under consideration those proposed fees. And after that 30-day period, we would either approve or modify or not approve. So, that's coming up in a couple of weeks. We continue our discussions with Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife, USGS, which is a, it's a US Geological Service. I don't like to use acronyms because sometimes people have no idea what USGS is. And the Department of Environmental Protection Water Supply Staff regarding future potential water supply wells proposed on the 250-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis Water System. I had reported a good meeting with them in January. We are progressing as per that, those discussions on multiple levels at this point. One of our priorities at this time is to try to get some quality information, both out of existing wells that have been identified and potential future wells that we may have to install if we need additional sampling. DEP Water Supply is communicating, has been communicating in another discussion tomorrow with the Director of our Water Supply Division. So, I expect that'll proceed. Once we have that information, I think we'll move very quickly. And I'll, I'm assuming that there will be good quality, but perhaps we may find something different than that. And then we will proceed with USGS to begin to do some modeling out there and see how that water balance works. I explained today on Channel 18, but, you know, the issue isn't just that it's 250 acres of wooded upland. There's a very complex pond system out there. That's the original reason why the land was purchased. So, what the, what the state is trying to do in managing that is making sure that if public water supply wells are installed, that they keep that proper balance between that complex pond system and those water supply wells. But, it's a very collegial sort of relationship. We hope that by March, we have some preliminary information to share on whether we'll be able to proceed further with that. We've signed into the intergovernmental agreement for communications dispatch and operations services. This is Town of Barnstable with the Hyannis Fire Department. So, you all had authorized me to do that. We have done that. So, that is proceeding. We've met with the Town of Yarmouth Town Manager and staff regarding the Community Compact Cabinet Grant that we received from the state. And we're reviewing the proposed scope of work regarding regional wastewater options. That's a pretty broad discussion even beyond that grant, talking about the shared watershed of Lewis Bay, talking about water supply issues. They face many of the similar challenges that we face regarding that. So, we have a good working relationship with Yarmouth. I've enclosed our comments on the Vineyard Wind Environmental Notification Form to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office regarding their proposed wind farm project. In addition, we will continue to coordinate with the Town of Yarmouth and keep you advised as we review and comment on these proposals. What I included was the cover letter. It gives you the gist of what we've said, but there's also attachments. And the Town Council Office has a copy of the full submittal. If you want it, for some reason, you know, I'll be more than happy to prepare more copies. A public hearing, it hasn't been held, it will be held, I apologize, on February 2nd, 9:00 a.m. in the Selectments Conference Room here at Town Hall on proposed changes to the Town of Barnstable Sandy Neck Park Regulations. I've also included that in your packet to take a look at. We'll take that under review as well. And then subsequent to any additional comments, we would move forward with those modifications. I think in review, you'll find that they are, they are certainly significant, but not, you know, they are minor modifications. So, but certainly I provided you with it. You'll see them, they're the lined-out items in there. And if you have any questions, please ask. If you can't attend the meeting again, we'll hold a period afterwards for any and all to comment. So, I'll be looking for any comments that you may have on this. We've been invited to attend the second five-year authorization meeting of the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District on Tuesday, February 27th at 8:30 a.m. at the Federated Church on Main Street. I've included their packet also in your handout. So, I do plan to attend that meeting. And then finally, I'm not quite sure how many people are aware that, and I've included an article that we received from, I'm on a hole, you can imagine. We get lots of different emails, lots of communications. This one in particular, I thought I should share. It's a one-page summary of what's changed in the recycling market. This is a significant issue that began last year. By the fall of 2017, we had seen single-stream recycling go from no cost to about $60 to $70 a ton to dispose of, meaning we are paying to get rid of that. Now, our contract was a three-year contract that expired at the end of December and we were not paying anything through that point. We negotiate on a three-year cycle on this one. So, by the time that we, by the time that we sat down to discuss this in January, it had gone from zero to about $65, I believe, in October to over $100 a ton now. That is the market for single-stream recycling. Now, we've seen these sorts of swings in the market before. The difference for us at this point is that because there was a strong market for as long as there was, we've gone to single-stream. For decades, we sorted our recyclables. There still is a market for sorted recyclables, not all of them, but for some of them. So, we are in discussions right now looking at how we might consider going forward from here. And certainly, it's everything from paying market to get rid of recyclables, which is not advantageous to us at this point when we're paying about $65 a ton to get rid of trash. And now you have to pay over $100 to get rid of recycling. And, but that market will change over time. And so, we really need to think through this. What we're seeing, many of the vendors that we do business with or have done business with, they're trying to go back to so- with, they're trying to go back to sorted recycling because clean product has markets. Combined product right now, it's expensive or it may not even be there to dispose of. So the article describes that on a statewide basis to y'all, but this will have significant impacts on solid waste disposal in Massachusetts, but certainly in the Town of Barnstable. We'll keep you advised as we progress on this. It may require us to move. Luckily, we haven't changed the facility, so it would take a retraining of our customer, but we may look to go back to sorted product if we can actually avoid cost by doing that. So we'll have to inform our customers certainly because this will be confusing. On the other hand, it's difficult to pay $100 plus a ton to dispose of recyclables. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, comments for the Town Manager? Counselor Schnep.
Thank you. Mark, I know that you're going to be setting the solid waste rates for next year. Is this change in recycling going to have any impact or we were able to absorb that?
Yeah, we have a pretty solid reserve as well. And if we look historically at the ups and downs of any market, we know, just think of any one of them, they go up and down. And so we're obviously at a down point in the recycling market. We also have a solid, healthy reserve at Solid Waste Division. So, no, the actual proposed rate change is $10 coming up. It's not reflective of those additional costs. In addition, if we modify the way we're doing business, and I've had meetings, I have another one tomorrow morning to continue the discussions, we can probably minimize this. If this is a long-term change in the market, then we'll have to relook at the programs. So again, though, we're assuming that we're at a low right now. And hopefully, there will be other markets that will emerge that will either take the single stream or we'll see a stronger sorted, and it'll just mean we'll have to modify the way we do things.
Okay. Counselor Beanbender.
Just a quick question. About how many tons do we generate in recycled material a year?
I think, well, it's hard to answer that. In single-stream, because we still do break them up into corrugated metals separated out and then single-stream, I want to say it's about, probably about 3,000 to 4,000 tons, but I'd want to get very specific numbers for you on that. There's still a market for clean corrugated. There's still a market for metals, separated metals. But right now, you know, we went to throw in all the paper and all the cans and glass and all colored glass together. There's no market for that. Like I said, you're paying a significant amounts to get rid of that now.
Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, thank you. Just a quick question on the change of rules and regulations at Sandy Neck. Did the Sandy Neck Advisory Board agree with all of these changes? Has that gone before then?
Yes, I believe it has, yes.
It has?
Yes.
And secondly, I'm curious on the Section 601-10 alcohol policy. Alcohol is prohibited from Sandy Neck along with other locations. Who has the responsibility for enforcing that at the location? Is it our Natural Resources Staff? Is it the Police Department? How is that handled?
Enforcement is done with our Police Department. Oversight is done through our Sandy Neck Rangers. So we have a coordinated and cooperative effort between our Sandy Neck Rangers and the Barnstable Police Department, to the point where they are present, the Police Department is present there to assist when needed.
Just, you know, in terms of reality, having spent many days on Sandy Neck Beach, I think it's going to be pretty tough to have 100% policy from keeping someone from having a cold beer on a hot Saturday afternoon in July. So I'm just curious how that all gets taken care of.
I will have Nina come in, if you would like, to brief us on the practicalities of how we, you know, implement that. She could give you a better answer. I could only share my experiences, you know, not being a Sandy Neck Ranger. You know, I go there in the summertime, but I'm not enforcing their regs.
As I did just mine.
Yes.
Counselor Raprasetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. You mentioned Sandy Neck, so I have to ask the question about sand and, well, make a comment first after reading an article about Sandwich and their sand mining off Scusset Beach and their permits, how they're feeling that the state is easing up on required permits or having to submit environmental notification form because of a Woods Hole study that basically proved that the sand that was being lost is sitting off Scusset Beach. And that leads me to a question regarding our dredging, our beach nourishment, which so many of our beaches, especially in Precinct 7, and I have to say this, Precinct 7, which was routinely beach-nourished, has been neglected for so many years. And I think a lot of that has to do with the requirements, the permitting requirements from the Army Corps of Engineer and State. So I hope, after reading this article, I hope that we can find it, since your relationship with the state seems to be doing very well and the permitting and processes seem to be easing up a little bit. I hope we can benefit from the sand mining, if you will, to help nourish some of our beaches because of jetties that have been put in place and caused some of this beach erosion. Just a comment and hope to see some action on that. Thank you.
Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I don't know how far away.
Shut that up and use the other one. Counselor Neary, can you help him out there? Thank you. Share and share alike.
Thank you, Paul. We knew the waste and the recycling issue was going to come and hit us in the face, and we were blessed for a couple of years of being free. And some people picked up some bad habits. But, you know, China got sick of our mixed commingled, and it was also very expensive to resort out. So I think that people are smart enough in our town to go back to helping us by sorting it out. There is strong market still for aluminum. The price is low, but there's a market, as well as for the corrugated cardboard and the paper when it's done correctly. So I'm just hoping that we can kind of launch an educational program and that at all transfer stations and certainly at Barnstable, we do give charities an opportunity to take the aluminum and the plastic and the glass. And so if we can keep people donating that, breaks my heart when I go and I look down in the bin in the commingled and there's all these nickels sitting there that could be going to good use. But it also brings the money, keeps the money here on Cape Cod, and somebody else pays for taking it off Cape, and it's not the taxpayers. So I hope that we can do an educational program that makes sense and saves us all money and resources. Thank you, Mark.
Vice President Crocker.
Does a solid waste hauler contract prohibit us from doing a blended mix to help offset us while we're looking at prices that exceed the cost of the solid haul?
I believe for acceptance, they're looking for no more than 20% recycled in the MSW waste stream. I also think that DEP, you know, the state regulators who oversee this, recognize what's happened in the market. So, yes, they are working with us, but, you know, at the heart of it, I think going back to the sorted over time is probably a medium-range approach to this. But then we've got to watch what happens with the recycling market. If it just doesn't come back, we're going to have to really think about our programming.
Yes, it's a fluctuation, and we just hope you use whatever skills possible. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Mark. Thank you very much. Vice President Crocker, could we please act on the minutes of January 18th, please?
Yes, Mr. President. In our packet tonight, we receive the minutes of January 18th. I move that we accept the minutes as drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of January 18th, 2018? All those opposed or abstain? One abstention. All right. We're going to move on to communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Anyone have anything? Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder to all of my fellow counselors that there's a February meeting coming up of the Cape Cod and Island Selectmen and Counselors Association. This is really our school. This is where we have the opportunity to meet all the other elected representatives, selectmen and counselors, fellow counselors. We're the only counselors on the Cape. But on the issues that are very critical to our region, so this is going to be Friday, the 9th of February, from 7:30 to 9:30. It's local to us this time at the Hyannis Golf Course. And I realize that many of us are working, but anybody who could possibly go. We are all members, and our membership is paid through the council offices here. And so it's a nice breakfast, but more importantly, is we get to talk to our fellow elected officials. So I encourage you to please attend if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Counselor Cullum.
Yes, I just want to say I missed the moment of silence tonight, and we lost a very important constituent in Precinct 13, a real champion for Hyannis. And it just doesn't feel right to not mention his name one more time. Bill Cronin passed away on the 30th a couple of days ago. And I just wanted to ask everybody to keep Laura, his wife, and Laura, his daughter, and their extended family in your thoughts and prayers because he was a real champion for what he believed was the vision for Hyannis. And he'll be missed. And ran the Civic Association with an iron fist for years and is still on their letterhead if you look at it today as a past president. So just wanted to say thank you to Bill for everything he's done for us.
Counselor Wallace.
Thank you. The Asset Management Advisory Committee met this evening. And to bring you up to speed as to where this committee has come to in the 15 months that we've been meeting, we do now have 30 small parcels, of which 180 butter letters will be going out to those small parcels for possible acquisition. In addition to that, we have 23 other larger parcels, and we have an RFP available now. Most importantly, you can find that on the website, but you can also come to a public meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, February 28th, at 2:00 p.m. right here in this room. It'll be held and managed by David Anthony, our Risk Management Procurement Officer. And it was through his hard work, along with our Assistant Town Manager, Andy Clyburn, that we've come to this place. And it's been a long time. It was tedious. We got through it, and we're moving on. And we're very thankful for the hard work of those individuals. Thanks.
Thank you to the committee and for everyone that's been working on that really for just over a year now. It's been a big project, so I appreciate everyone's time to do that. Anyone else have anything? Counselor Schnep.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to alert the council and the audience tonight that nominations for the Mercy Otis Warren Cape Cod Woman of the Year are now open. And former Councilwoman Ann Kennedy brought this to our attention. We've had several women from the Town of Barnstable who have received this award, including Eugenie Fortes, Felicity Penn, Lynn Poyant, Judy Scarafile, and Gloria Rudman, and I hope I didn't miss anyone else from Barnstable. So please consider the women in our community to nominate. And nominations can be found at merciotiswarrencapecod@gmail.com or on the webpage at barnstablecounty.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flores.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a moment of recognition for a gentleman who lived in Precinct 1 on the corner of Kevin Elaine and 6A. He was a good friend, good neighbor, Ralph Janoskis, who passed away suddenly, not too long ago, just a few weeks. Although we did not include him in the moment of silence, I felt really compelled to share just two particular facts about him. Ralph was the second most decorated athlete to graduate from West Point. He was the captain of the football team, the hockey team, and the baseball team for the four years that he attended the university. And upon his graduation, did his service time. But just as interesting, he had a career working for a Gillette company in Boston. And Ralph's claim to fame in many, many respects is probably recognized every day by those of us who pick up a Gillette shaver now that has more than one blade on it because he helped invent that at Gillette and holds the patent. And so it's with heavy heart and condolences to him and his family that I just wanted to share that. A really very good man.
Thank you for that, Counselor. Anyone else? Vice President Crocker.
I would like to share in Counselor Schnep's discussion about Mercy Otis, certainly a fine award and a great recognition of those who are worthy. And also, we should make note that Dolores Deluce was our winner last year as well. So it's an exciting time, and we have another recipient with us tonight. Please bring your names forward. It's a great honor, and it's a well-done program.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move into the orders of the day. Just kind of interested in everyone's time and also to maintain quorum, we're going to move into a new business. We're going to move an item up. Counselor Cullum, could you please read and open the joint hearing on the 2018, item 2018-062?
Yes, I'd like to open for a public hearing, a joint hearing with the planning board, please. Item number 2018-062, authorizing submission of growth incentive zone designation application for downtown Hyannis to Cape Cod Commission, as written.
I have a second. And at this point, I'd like to invite the planning board to come join us up front here and open their portion of the public hearing.
No snuggling. There's no snuggling tonight. Whoops.
Welcome to everyone. Madam Chair, would you like to open the public hearing in your meeting?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to open up the planning board meeting for February 1st, 2018. This is a joint meeting with the Town Council on 2018 Downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone Application as read in by the President of the Town Council. And I'd like to introduce the board first.
Good evening, David Monsell. It's good to see you, new members up there. They've been kicking me, I've been kicking myself around for probably 12 years on the planning board, so. But it's good to see some nice new faces up there, and we miss some of the old faces, too.
Good evening and thank you to the council, Jeffrey Schwartz.
Paul Curley.
And my name is Mary Barry. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion and a vote to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the public hearing is now open.
Great. So both, the public hearing is open for the council and the planning board, and we both have quorum, so we are ready to go. I think we have our Director of Planning, Elizabeth Jenkins, here for presentation.
Good evening, Councilors, Planning Board. Again, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. We are here tonight to present the 2018 application for designation of the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. So just a moment of background. A growth incentive zone is a tool that is enabled by the Cape Cod Commission and adopted by the town that is designed to promote the implementation of both regional and local land use policy, to direct new growth and development into land use policy, to direct new growth and development into existing activity centers that are served by existing infrastructure, promoting redevelopment and infill potential in areas that are served by pedestrian infrastructure and transit. Again, promoting compact, mixed-use development, smart growth, thoughtful density, over sprawling land use development patterns. The downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone was designated in 2006. That designation expires April 4th of this year. So we are again seeking to designate the area as a downtown, as a growth incentive zone. So the incentive in growth incentive zone is that in exchange for the thoughtful planning that goes into the designation, major developments are exempt from review by the Cape Cod Commission as development of regional impact, DRI review. So it puts the responsibility for review of projects within this area with the town of Barnstable. So again, just a little context. The, the Growth Incentive Zone was designated in 2006. And there were a number of resources that went into this designation. There were staff resources, the creation of the former growth management department. There was new zoning adopted. We adopted the regulatory agreement as a tool within the growth incentive zone boundary. We adopted a design and infrastructure plan because if you're going to be thoughtful about density in your community, you want to make sure that it reflects the character and the form of development that we'd like to see here on Cape Cod. And we looked at the capital improvements that would be necessary to support the new growth. And as a result of that came the Growth Incentive Zone designation. So this is the boundary as it currently stands in the 2006 application. So it's area south of the airport rotary, west of the West End rotary, to the Yarmouth Town Line, on either sides of South Street, and around Hyannis Harbor. And that boundary, again, was based on zone, the rezoning, zoning districts that were put in place prior to the adoption of the growth incentive zone. So one of the major efforts that went into the local permit streamlining, because again, the incentive here being permit streamlining, both by eliminating Cape Cod Commission review, but we also had to do our own homework and look at how we were going to streamline within our own local zoning. So part of this effort was taking 14 different zoning districts, consolidating those into seven, and again, adopting standards that were reflective of the village scale development that we were trying to promote within this zone. And so the application, the 2006 application, the way it was structured was largely based on upper limit development threshold. So the idea was that we pre-permitted development up to a certain level and that any sort of development under those thresholds would be exempt from review. So the 2006 application exempt about 600 housing units and 585 square feet of commercial space. And these, these, these levels of development, the number of housing units, the square footage of commercial, were what we benchmarked on in the, in the 2006 application. They were, in some ways, they were, almost became a goal for development. But in fact, that was never the goal of the Growth Incentive Zone. The goal, role of the Growth Incentive Zone was to promote the revitalization of downtown, the vibrancy of the community, a new form of development that supported a, a community in downtown Hyannis. It wasn't necessarily to get to 600 units or to get to 580,000 square feet of commercial space, which is, is good actually, because we came nowhere close to these thresholds, even the planning year one to two thresholds. In the, in the years since the Growth Incentive Zone was adopted, we've added a total of 104 residences and about 300 square feet of commercial space within the Growth Incentive Zone. So the structure that was in the original application, again, in terms of going back and reviewing our progress, didn't necessarily hold up because we, we didn't see ourselves meeting these development thresholds. So this allowed ourselves to ask us this time through, instead of benchmarking on development, let's benchmark on what are the community's goals? What are we trying to build in downtown Hyannis? So that was the question we asked ourselves when we started this process. And so the first thing we did was go out to the community to see if the goals that we set out in the 2006 Growth Incentive Zone stayed the same. So in collaboration with the Cape Cod Commission, there was a, a community-wide survey put out. There were two large citizen forums. We held three stakeholder workshops to making sure we were getting a broad range of voices in the development application. And really, there's no number there because numerous reviews of town staff, probably more than we could add up, to, to really look at the technical aspects of the application. And so what we found was really an affirmation of the 2006 goals about what was most important to the Hyannis community. And I think what you'll see up here aren't really surprises. The, the things that, that bubbled to the top were, what are, what are our priorities? Our priorities are healthy drinking water, public safety, jobs, schools, housing, really the things we saw in the 2006 application. But this application, this time around, gave us an opportunity to kind of rally the vision around downtown Hyannis and the type of development that, that we wanted to see there. It also gave us the opportunity to look at the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone in context. So I think there was so much focus in 2006 on, again, promoting redevelopment on Main Street, that vitality of the, the downtown Hyannis Main Street corridor, that we weren't necessarily, we didn't necessarily, I, I don't want to say it was an oversight, but because there was so much effort that went into thinking about what was in the boundary. But because that boundary was established and those, those kind of measures and, and that regulatory work had been done, it gave us the opportunity this time to again, look contextually, to think about how the surrounding residential neighborhoods that are so important to the success of Hyannis Main Street fit into this picture, to think about the Route 132 corridor and how that's going to grow and develop, obviously a gateway into downtown Hyannis, and how does that factor into this. So as we put this application together, we were able to think a little bit more broadly and contextually about the Growth Incentive Zone application. And what we really ended up with was a collaboration with the Cape Cod Commission that represents a new approach to growth incentive zones in downtown, in, in Cape Cod. This was the first time we had ever reauthorized, the Cape Cod Commission had other, reauthorized a growth incentive zone. So again, it gave us an, it gave both the commission and the town an opportunity to look at this tool and how to make it most effective. So this application will be supported by pending changes by the Cape Cod Commission to the regulations that will change the structure of, of the, of how growth incentive zones essentially work on Cape Cod. So there will no longer be those development thresholds. And there will no longer be, and an, an end date to the Growth Incentive Zone. It will stand, it will instead be permanent and ongoing based on the town and the commission's collaboration and commitment to ongoing measuring and reporting. So if you've looked at the application, just a quick overview, this is what you will see, a general discussion of, again, those purposes and goals overall of the Growth Incentive Zone, a comprehensive land use and zoning analysis, because you can't figure out where you're going unless you know where you've been and where you are, an overview of that stakeholder engagement process, an outline of the performance measures, again, that we're going to use going forward to, to benchmark and to measure progress within the Growth Incentive Zone. The infrastructure and amenities analysis, which really provides the core of the application, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in detail, as well as a capital improvement inventory and a strategic plan for implementation of the goals in the Growth Incentive Zone. So again, because I, I know that there's been a lot of attention about the boundary, I do want to address that upfront. One of the things you will see in the application in that introduction and in that goals is a proposal to amend the boundaries of the existing Growth Incentive Zone application, to add the parcel, that would effectively add the parcel at 35 Scudder Avenue, currently home of the Hyannis Resort and Conference Center. So that is included in the proposed application. And I will talk about that a little bit more at the end as well. Again, you're, we've provided you with a copy of this map. So again, existing and proposed gives boundary. And the change here you see is an amendment to the boundary to include that parcel at 35 Scudder. So the infrastructure and amenities analysis, again, this goes back to the idea of what are we measuring and what are we benchmarking within the Growth Incentive Zone. So with the commission, we identified essentially six systems that are at work within downtown. And these systems are really what I like to think about as the building blocks for community and for development within, within the Growth Incentive Zone. So the, the purpose of the infrastructure and amenities analysis is to look across these six systems to see how the growth and development that we desire within the zone may impact these infrastructure and amenities, and in turn, how these infrastructure and amenities may contain and support desired growth. So again, there, we've identified these measure, these, these categories. And we, and developed measures here that will inform us, I think, how to, again, appropriate resources within the Growth Incentive Zone. So we have six categories here, transportation and mobility, water resources, community services, neighborhoods, utilities, and coastal resiliency. And with each, and within each one of those, a number of subcategories. So within each one of those broad categories and subcategories, you'll see that each one has a, has a broad-based goal, individual measures associated with it, as well as issues and opportunities. So this structure, the infrastructure amenities analysis, and then again, the associated goals, measures, and discussion of issues and opportunities are really a new framework in this application that are designed to support a sustained commitment to Hyannis that's really necessary to achieve the type of revitalization and economic development goals that we would all like to see in downtown Hyannis, and support an approach to downtown revitalization that's additive, incremental, cumulative, and long-term. So in the interest of time, I will not read through all of these goals. Again, they've been provided to you in the handout and are of course in the application. But broad-ranging goals related to transportation and mobility, really again, supporting a multimodal environment with access to transit. Water resources, again, looking at both our, looking at our wastewater, stormwater, and drinking water infrastructure. Community services, looking at really a broad range of, of topics ranging from, again, public safety, open space and recreation, arts and culture, historic resources. Neighborhoods, which looks at community health and housing, and again, supporting, again, supporting the overall goals of the Growth Incentive Zone. Utilities, looking at their support for, and the need for reliability there to support development, and coastal resiliency, again, recognizing our geography as a coastal community. And then I think one of the, the most exciting parts of the application are, again, really the implementation tools that we've begin to, that we've been get to incorporate here. And, and those are two parts you'll see here. And one is a capital improvement inventory. So what we, so again, in partnership with the commission, what we did was look at all of the kind, all of the planned developments, both in our capital improvement plan, and talking to, again, department heads about aspirational goals and things that they would like to see, and focusing on the Growth Incentive Zone as well as the Greater Hyannis Area, what we're calling the Greater Hyannis Area, the Village of Hyannis, to look at what sort of investments are we, are we planning right now from a, from a capital and infrastructure perspective? And how do those impact, again, the, the anticipated growth and development within the Growth Incentive Zone? And then a strategic plan, which really lays out for, both for town staff, for policymakers, and the, and the community, a way forward. We set goals and objectives, which is great, but at the end of the day, we have to be able to implement those goals and objectives to, to, to get business done within the town. So this is a, a roadmap of sorts to, to let us start to think about how, how we might move forward. So again, in the interest of time, I won't take you through all of the things that in the, in the strategic plan, I believe, we ended up with. 21 overall categories. But I'd like to highlight just a few, again, because I, I think they, they do represent, again, an important look at what we're doing and how we're going to move forward. So just a few of those, very quickly. Create an internal Hyannis infrastructure and development staff team. So we're again aligned under, the town staff is aligned under this model of place-based planning to dedicate resources to the Growth Incentive Zone, to of course cooperate with the Cape Cod Commission, to regularly refine the measures that reflect our community values. Again, to review and update our design and infrastructure plan and our zoning, that's in place within the Growth Incentive Zone. Design guidelines and zoning, these are tools and technologies that were adopted in 2006, but need to be updated, like any tool and technology. So I think to, again, promote the kind and type of development that we want to see there, on the predictable kind of development that I think residents want to see, we should look at, at updating and evaluating these tools. Working with the commission to complete a spatial fiscal impact model, so we can look at the fiscal impacts of our development. So the difference, again, from a fiscal standpoint in terms of developing under a smart growth model versus a more traditional one. And to work with the Greater Hyannis Civic Association on developing, supporting neighborhood vision plans, because again, the health of those neighborhoods that surround the Growth Incentive Zone are really vital to its success. Under transportation and mobility, developing a parking management system. As you know, the, the growth management department did a parking management plan. So really being aggressive about next steps towards implementation of that plan. Community services and neighborhoods, rethinking programming of our existing green space, again, as we think about developing in a compact way. Public open spaces become very important to that. You know, we're pretty built out in Hyannis, so not a lot of room to acquire new green space, but thinking about how to repurpose and make the most of our existing green spaces. Promoting efficiencies for health and social services in Hyannis, something that certainly comes up when you talk about revitalization of downtown. But looking at potential strategies to reduce the ground floor space on Main Street used for health and human services organizations, and look at how potentially collaboration between these organizations could promote efficiencies. Water resources and coastal resiliency strategies, again, looking broader in terms of strategies that will support really all of Hyannis, identifying permitting additional water supply sources, continuation of the planning that the Water Resources Advisory Committee set out in implementation of those plans. So that, again, that in a nutshell outlines the application, both the new structure for measuring and reporting under the Growth Incentive Zone, and then an implementation plan, a way forward. So I would just like to take a moment and pause on the boundary, because again, based on the public hearing on Monday and some of the comments that we've received, I'd just like to, to address some of the questions that came up in that forum. So again, the Growth Incentive Zone, the, the primary, the primary outcome of, of what happens within this boundary is that developments within this area are exempt from Cape Cod Commission review. I'd like to emphasize that by being that exemption, it doesn't provide any sort of local regulatory permissions for any sort of land use on the property. All development within the Growth Incentive Zone, of course, remains subject to local zoning. It remains subject to state and, state and local wetland and conservation regulations. So the Growth Incentive Zone in no way provides a waiver from any sort of the, the rigorous local process that any new development has to go through in the town of Barnstable. So in relation specifically to 35 Scudder, any development on that property would require a notice public hearing in, in a forum, depending on how it might build out. So the parcel's currently zoned residence B. It's zoned for single-family residential development. That's really the only principal permitted use in that district. It is in the regulatory agreements district map. And I think that is an important consideration in that the town, another tool that we'll talk about this evening, is the ability for the town to enter into a regulatory agreement with the developer to establish the permitted uses and densities on a property in a, in a contractual way. So the property at 35 Scudder is currently within the regulatory districts map. So by placing it within the Growth Incentive Zone, what it really does is it, and, and not just the boundary change, but I think this has really been the overall theme of this application, is, is shifting responsibility and control to the town of Barnstable. So I think it requires us to proactively plan for development on that property and using the framework in the Growth Incentive Zone application. So it, it will be our responsibility to evaluate development proposals that may come forward for adequacy of public infrastructure, of natural resources protection, and for all the other issues that we, we always evaluate new development. So again, we, we have both the benefit and the responsibility of being the sole entity that gets to say yes or no to what happens on that property. Boundary change again. So the review process, the, the vote that would be requested by both the planning board and the, and the town council would be authorization for the town manager to submit the application to the Cape Cod Commission for consideration for Growth Incentive Zone designation. And then that does have to be heard by the Cape Cod Commission Assembly of Delegates, and then the GIZ gets authorized. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I just wanted to clarify a few things.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I just wanted to clarify a few things before we go to the public hearing. The existing GIZ map includes part of the parcel, which is the hotel and the golf course already, a small portion of, basically where the hotel is. Is that correct?
It does. So, again, because that existing map was based on zoning boundaries, it doesn't always necessarily follow parcel lines. So there is a small portion of the parcel at Thirty-Five Scudder, as well as of the neighboring parcel, that are in the, the growth incentive zone map. It's a small portion.
Okay. And you've received no proposal for this property? No formal proposal?
No. Certainly, any sort of development that we talk about on this property, it's, you know, I'm sorry, it's a fifty-four acre property. The golf course represents about forty-four acres. We did receive a letter, an indication from the property owner, indicating that they were interested in potentially developing the golf course portion of the property, but any sort of development proposal at this point is speculative. There are no applications on file.
No applications for permits on file, okay. And the GIZ itself doesn't change zoning at all?
Has no impact on the local regulatory process. So, again, the sole impact of it is a waiver of a requirement for development within that, within this geographic area to be considered by the Cape Cod Commission for development of regional impact review.
And because that parcel that might possibly be included in the new GIZ map, that parcel's already in the reg map, the regulatory agreement map?
Correct.
So, anything can be proposed today there that would have to go through a review process? Residential, commercial? The GIZ doesn't open the door to anything, with or without the GIZ, pretty much anything could be proposed today for that parcel?
Correct. So a regulatory agreement, again, as we'll discuss later, is a, is a tool separately enabled by the Cape Cod Commission and adopted by the town, that allows the town and a qualified applicant, a developer or a property owner, to enter into negotiation for, to establish the permitted uses of a property. That does require, again, review and approval by the Planning Board, majority review and approval by the Planning Board, and by the Town Council, by a two-thirds majority, of course, both at public hearings.
Okay. So that parcel's open to any type of development as, as of today, with or without the GIZ?
Of course, with the scrutiny of the town through that.
And there's no change to the local town review? The only change is the Cape Cod Commission wouldn't review it?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. At this point, I'd like to go into the public hearing. I'm going to set some ground rules for the public hearing. Obviously, the council is fully aware of the emails and the calls and the meetings, the public hearing taking place to, to date in the comments. It is really important when we post an agenda to actually stick to the item at hand and to what, what we're actually voting on, and not to go astray and go off the tracks, which seems like some of this discussion leading up to this has gone off the tracks. So it's not the time tonight to discuss any possible proposal for this site, because there are none proposed. Residential, commercial, there's no type of proposal for this site. If and when something came forward, it would go through the normal public process, and that would be the time to have comments on any type of development proposed for that site. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask that there are no discussions, comments, pros and cons of a performing arts center, because there is none proposed. I want to stay on the item, on the agenda, and all it is, is the GIZ application. It has nothing to do with any particular development. So, this is the test, to see if the adults can listen better than my kids. So with that, if anyone wishes to speak, now's the time for public
Good evening, town councils, members of the Planning Board. For the record, my name's John Kenny. I'm an attorney in the Law Office in Centerville, and I represent TFG Hyannis Hospitality Group LLC, the owner of the property at Thirty-Five Scudder Avenue. My clients have requested that the property be included in the fifty-four acre, the fifty-four acre parcel be included in the GIZ. As Elizabeth just pointed out, it is a first step in, in the possible development of this property. Has to go to the commission, the Assembly of Delegates, and then we would like to eventually come back and, as Elizabeth talked about, as part of the new GIZ application, revisit and update the zoning. As Elizabeth stated, the property's currently zoned predominantly for Residence B, which allows for one acre single-family residences. It doesn't really lend itself to that type of development. Do we have that plan?
This is, this is just a plan of the, of the parcel outlined. You can see the hotel and conference center up front on Scudder Avenue, right up in here. And then, you can see, the area in green is wetlands, non-developable land. Some of the rest of this is either mitigation land and/or land that's subject to the flood zone. So the real developable portion is, is this area right in here, and it is approximately twenty-eight acre parcel. The development envelope is about twenty-one acres. So if you, if you look at that parcel and consider the, the current zoning, the Residence B one, one acre zoning, it just, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't fit because of the constraints of, of the site. So, when my client heard that the, the growth incentive zone was being reviewed, being renewed, they looked at it as an opportunity, as Elizabeth said, to be proactive in planning for the development of this, of this property. They've owned it for over ten years. They've been approached multiple times by different parties with ideas either to buy the golf course for development, or the hotel and golf course with the idea of developing it. It is an underperforming asset. It's a, you know, nice little golf course, but you'd be stunned at the numbers for, for the benefit of the hotel. It's very low. It's been a nice land banking opportunity, but they do intend to develop this parcel. As part of this, to take the first step to review and update the zoning, they, they want the property included in the growth incentive zone. As Elizabeth said, it doesn't take away any of the regulatory authority or controls of, of the town, but it gives us an opportunity to do some creative thinking about the current zoning, and maybe come back to these two boards someday with some new, new zoning. The only thing that's being asked right now is to include this in the growth incentive zone application map, to allow us to do that creative thinking and planning and be proactive about planning the development of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, everyone. Planning Board, Counselor, good evening. My name is Jerry Gonick, and I stand here today as the President of Oceanside Performing Arts Center. Just a little history about myself. I moved to the Cape in nineteen seventy-one, and I have had an office in Hyannis since nineteen seventy-three. I have seen Hyannis change drastically through those years. Hyannis is a different from any other area on the Cape. Hyannis provides us with a Cape Cod environment and provides services and entertainments like no other village. It is alive all year round, and it vibrates like no other place on Cape Cod. Residents and tourists all come to Hyannis for various reasons. For the, for the melody tent, for the pops on the sea, to visit them all.
Let's make sure we're sticking to the GIZ, we're not getting into the.
I am. I'm getting, I'm just trying to create a.
They set the rules, and I'm going to enforce them.
I, I appreciate that. And there is reasons for all, for reasons, many reasons why different residents and visitors come to the Cape, to Hyannis. That provides economic opportunity for Hyannis. Business areas abound in Hyannis, which creates a situation where Hyannis is actually the hub of the Cape. We all embrace Hyannis's services, and we all use them. The inclusion of the Scudder Avenue rounds off and makes complete the extension of the GIZ, and it further elevates Hyannis to the Cape. When you look at the plan of the area, as you can see, the area to be developed is surrounded by environmentally protected wetlands. In addition, this favorable configuration creates a natural buffer zone from, for the surrounding neighborhoods. It lends itself to proper regulatory development, to the benefit of all concerned, and to the, and to Hyannis. It is a natural, it is natural to be included in the GIZ. Application, application to fulfill the vision has been thoughtfully thought out by this presentation. What's really interesting is that even though the parcel is forty-four acres, the development envelope of the entire parcel is twenty-point-seventy-seven I think that the other aspect of this matter is the fact that, in developing the GIZ, it has shown that both the town and the Cape Cod Commission have, have no opposition for having the inclusion of the Scudder Avenue property. And I think that's very vital for this, these two boards to consider. The, the, you've just thrown me off a second here, okay? Ten years ago, when the GIZ was implemented, there was a different emphasis and concerns by the Cape Cod Commission. Today, the Cape Cod Commission has become a partner with the town. It has morphed into a regional agency that now works together with the town to promote vision and create a living environment that is both relevant to today's society and still keeps the traditions inherent on the Cape. I believe the application that's before you today, that application before you today, provides the stage for that development. I would ask you to please endorse and recommend that the application with Scudder Avenue property be submitted to the Cape Cod Commission for the approval of the GIZ. In my humble opinion, okay, this is a major golden opportunity for this town. This can be, this is your legacy to the town. I'd ask you to please embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Not singling you out, I'm just being fair to everyone.
No, no, no.
Because you can't unring a bell, so we're just going to stay on track here.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to stay, keep us here?
I can stay there. Next up?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Councils, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. As most of you are aware, I'm a land use attorney here in Hyannis, but I'm here tonight as a volunteer member of the Board of Directors of Oceanside Performing Arts Center, and I am offering my comments tonight in favor of extending the boundaries of the growth incentive zone to include Thirty-Five Scudder Avenue. As Elizabeth prefaced in her introductory comments, approving the draft application, which has obviously taken a tremendous amount of time and work, and I commend both the town and the commission on that application that's before you, extending the boundaries to include Thirty-Five Scudder Avenue does not change the zoning or affect what uses might be permissible on that property. Rather, the only effect of approving the boundary extension is that a development that would otherwise require mandatory Cape Cod Commission review and a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission would no longer be required. You'll notice I said that extending the GIZ eliminates mandatory Cape Cod Commission referral for a project that would exceed Cape Cod Commission thresholds. I think this is important to keep in mind, because if the GIZ is extended, and the town is presented with a project on this property or any property within the growth incentive zone, for which it determines that it doesn't have the expertise or capacity to review that project in whole or in part, the town always has the ability to discretionarily refer a project, again, in whole or in part, to the Cape Cod Commission. I suggest, therefore, that you are not giving up any controls by including this property within the growth incentive zone. Rather, your including it within the growth incentive zone provides the town with maximum control over the review process of any future development on the property. And having represented many property owners and applicants before the town of Barnstable, I can personally attest to the rigorous review, the level of expertise of the town staff and boards, and the thorough attention that's given to any development project that is put before the town of Barnstable. Therefore, I, I hope very much that both the Planning Board and the council will vote to extend the GIZ boundary to include Thirty-Five Scudder Avenue. I know it's a, a start in a process, and we ask for your approval of it tonight. Thank you very much.
You? Anyone else wish to speak?
Lou Gonzaga, resident of Centerville, formerly lifetime resident of Hyannis. I do want to present something that I can't talk about, but it's put on the letterhead.
You can hand it to the town clerk. We'll get copies to the council.
I would like some, one of you to read it, because.
I'm not going to read it right now, but hand it to the town clerk, and we'll get it to the council.
It's unfortunate before you vote, there is something that you.
It's okay.
I can't talk about.
That's right. Thank you for following the rules.
Okay.
We're only going to deal in reality tonight.
Okay. I oppose it, and I'm going to tell you why. I'm going to tell you, Hyannis of yesteryear. As a kid, a couple of you probably remember it. Beginning of Main Street used to be Dumont's Pharmacy. What is it today? Would you love tourists come? And what do they first see? Scary. You don't want your kids to walk out of the car. I don't need to say anything, because you've probably walked it. Keep on walking down Main Street, and some of the prime space that should be commercial space are franchised churches. Usually, where you have franchised churches is where you have high crime, lots of drugs, because they're bringing them in. The hallelujah factor. Then, we keep on walking down. We had a beautiful, which used to be a golf, little mini golf, empty. So you're trying to extend it, and you can't even bring business here. Town of Barnstable has become an anti-business town. I heard it from somebody the other day, stated, "We need to have XYZ built on that", you know, where it's going to be, because it's going to be the great solution and eliminate everything. No, it won't. Why do we have the five-hundred block there with, with all social programs? Unfortunately, I can't blame you guys, but the prior administrations that were here caused it, because the person that wanted to build that into commercial space couldn't get it approved. And what did he do? Which I would do as a businessman. I went to the state and said, "I have building space, and let's do social programs." Every month, he's getting money. That, so that is why I am totally against this. I'm a believer, you know, and, and I'm going to put it, and I hate when people, you know, ask me, "Where are you from? Hyannis." They go, "Brockton by the Sea." We need to convert that. And it's a shame for the people from Brockton, because they get insulted, because they go, "We're not that bad." Hyannis has potential. And I'm going to finish with this. We had the walkway to the sea, fantastic. Where is the walkway from the sea? And this project's not going to do it. I'm not a favorite of the Cape Cod Commission whatsoever, but I recommend you keep it so it does go through the Cape Cod Commission. In that factor, I do trust them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Come on down.
Lynn Conroy, from the Friends of Stewart's Creek. The proposed expansion of the GIZ zone runs between Stewart's Creek and Joshua's Creek. The golf course forms a delta there. About, from the end of the golf course, it's about five-hundred feet to the Seastreet Beach. The shellfish beds to the right of the opening to the ocean have been closed for years because of pollution and contamination. About a quarter of a mile from that down the seacoast is the Hyannis Port Fortis Beach, and that's next in terms of its pollution. We need to take care of our marshes. We need to take care of our green space. Once it's gone, we're not getting it back. And most of all, we need to take care of this compromised marshland. The other night at the Planning Board meeting, I was told that I wouldn't be bothered because my house is far away from the golf course. Well, it's so close that I get golf balls in the backyard. Dog loves it, saves a lot of money, but it's part of, part of what I put up with being near the golf course. We've had various people writing, and I got this message from one of our members the other day. He's talking about the trash that takes place when you turn the golf course, which is well-maintained, into a parking lot. Anything where a, with a large parking lot where the golf course now will end up looking like a trash disposal area, do we need to incentivize? do we need to incentivize that? Walk around the perimeter of the Melody Tent parking lot.
Just a reminder, we don't, there's nothing proposed for this parcel, so now we're talking about something that's never proposed.
We're talking about trash that comes with the development and the...
Let's stick to the boundaries of the GIZ and the pros and cons of that. There's nothing to talk about that's a proposal. So let's stick to the rules of the public hearing and stick to the item on the agenda, please.
The proposed development is too close, and the GIZ incentive zone is too close to the liquor store and all it attracts. Walk Greenwood Avenue, Scudder Avenue, West Main Street, as my dog Julie and I do almost daily, and it's littered with trash. This whole area is an embarrassment to a town that wants to attract tourists. At first, I thought the idea of a GIZ expansion would be nice. But if the Melody Tent can't even pick up its trash, why add to it? Before any GIZ vote is taken, I'd be happy to take the members on a short walking tour of the area to show them the future, and that's really opening up the door to make this a garbage incentive zone.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Jean Walsh. I have lived on Greenwood Avenue for forty-one years. Bought my house there with my husband when I was twenty-one years old. And thirty years ago, I could take, I'm on the corner of Hill Street, but I'm not in a butter's a butter. So I'm assuming that's why, once again, I have no notification of anything happening in my neighborhood from the Town of Barnstable, which really ticks me off, especially from the previous, I'm a member of the Stewart's Creek District, so... Anyway, my son and I, thirty years ago, we took a little rowboat from the end of Hill Street, we used to call it the swamp, all the way up to the causeway by C Street. And we only had to get out of the boat one time, you know? And we saw, I swear to God, like a Jacques Cousteau, big giant turtle, and it was really cool. Now it's like a dried-up smelly thing. That's the swamp, which we called that thirty years ago, really turned into one, instead of a moving body of water that went under Frank Mason's garage into the pond over by the golf station, which is now the sub shop thing. Anyway, I'm not very organized, but I am currently a student at Cape Cod Community College, a returning adult student. Coincidentally, I started there in nineteen seventy-seven when I bought my little ranch on Greenwood. I have been a student now for five years and just about ready to finish up. And I have one more course after this current one of environmental science. My project, my thesis for the course, which is, we've done three classes, is up Stewart's Creek without a paddle. So that gives you an idea of how I feel about the way the town went about things before with notifications and how they're doing it again. I really protest the lack of communication and transparency. One of the other things that school has taught me was to, I took statistics, and it told me to question the data sources. So just for the heck of it, I looked up who was on the Cape Cod Commission in two thousand and six, when I think that is when this, you call it GIZ or GIZ, I don't know what you call it, but when this thing was implemented. And this is quoting from the two thousand and six Cape Cod Commission annual report fiscal year oh-six, where they use the word downtown four times in one small paragraph. The executive director at the time was Margaux Fenn, and she wrote like a report of what happened during, under her watch. So it basically was just a short, one paragraph description of how they developed this improvement zone and outlining it where it was. And it didn't include Dunphy's, Tara, you know? I've lived there all my life, and I remember when it was storyland and when it was a driving range, and you didn't have to kneel at the Melody Tent. So I know, I know where I'm talking about. It's my backyard. When, anyway, this is a quote from the executive director in two thousand and six from her paragraph of her report. Again, her name was Margaux Fenn, quote, "The GIZ designation eliminates the need for commission review of individual developments in this area." At the time, other people on the commission, and I'm comparing oh-six commission, Barnstable County Commission, to the present one. At the time, it was much larger. There were nineteen people represented, one from each town. There was also somebody just from the commission and the county commissioner, excuse me. There was a minority representative. There was a representative for Native Americans, and there was a governor appointee. So our representative for Barnstable at that time started out as David Ansel, A-N-S-E-L, who I'm not familiar with. But in April oh-six, Roy Richardson took over. And it would be safe to say, everybody knows that, who he is, right? And so he's a good guy. But it was a different conglomeration of people. But I think they were all from, the names I read, astute enough and had an eye on the ecological sustainability, which I learned what that was today in my lecture, looking toward the future, making sure that Twinbrooks land is still there for us today. And we have an obligation to make sure that vacant land, which is the only chunk of land in Hyannis that's beautiful there. And whoever mentioned, it's only twenty-two, you know, acres. Forgot to say buildable in that sentence because the rest of it is marshland and ponds and little streams. I have a million golf balls in Twinbrooks. I was a member there for, you know, three or four years. So I'm familiar with that terrain. There's nothing more beautiful, except maybe Hyannis Port Club. Maybe they wanna sell something, you know? Maybe that would be a good place for a proposed art center. And sir, I disrespectfully, I respectfully disagree that you say there's no proposals out there when three people get up here and say, "I represent."
There is no proposal.
Oh, naturally, but obviously, everybody knows what's going to happen.
No proposal.
That's correct. There's no proposal. Okay, Mr. Wizard.
Okay.
Excuse me, that was disrespectful. I apologize.
Let's wrap it up.
I apologize. Okay. My other question is, if you change the zoning and then the attorney said, "That's all we're changing." That's all we're changing is the zoning. But you're really, you're changing everything else along with it. You're changing your ecological footprint, the traffic, the crime. The marsh and the wetlands are gonna be destroyed. The creek is already destroyed. Do you know that you're gonna get a polluted piece of property if you buy it? If you pay everybody in Stewart's Creek maybe a hundred thousand dollars, I'd be in on it, but I don't wanna pay you guys another hundred thousand dollars in taxes. I can't stay in my house much longer. I work three jobs already. I'm a senior citizen. I'm taxed out. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have something new to add to do with the GIZ boundary? And again, to clarify, there's no zoning change taking place.
Good evening. Name is Felicia Penn. I live in Hyannis. And I think you have a letter from me that was dated. Both the Planning Board and the Town Council received a letter from me dated January eighteenth for the Planning Board and January twentieth for the Town Council. It was relatively the same letter, a little bit of differences between them, but... This letter suggested that the decision to add thirty-five Scudder Ave. to the growth incentive zone was such an important action that answers to questions and certain questions are needed. The first and most important question is, what infrastructure does this parcel possess that qualifies it for inclusion in the GIZ? I'd like to know that because we saw in the presentation this evening, and you've probably seen it in your handouts, that the GIZ land and parcels within the GIZ have to have existing infrastructure to handle the density of the growth that's gonna be planned. As a side note, I was a member of the Planning Board in two thousand and six. I was a new member then, right when the GIZ was coming in in this town. I am in favor of the GIZ renewal, but not with this extension of property. I'll just tell you that upfront. At the recent Planning Board hearing Monday night, the question that I just asked, "What infrastructure does this parcel possess that qualifies it for inclusion in the GIZ?" That question was, and others were asked, but there were no answers forthcoming. I am hoping that at tonight's public hearing and those that follow, and I hope there are some that follow, that an answer is forthcoming so that informed decisions can be made. The reason this land was not included in the original GIZ or in the request that was made four, five years ago from the property owner to put it in the GIZ was because this property does not possess the existing infrastructure to qualify for the GIZ inclusion, period. I ended my original letter with the statement that "The integrity of the downtown Hyannis growth incentive zone will be compromised if you approve the inclusion of this property." This is a factual statement. All through the GIZ application, you will read statements that refer to the concept that development, redevelopment, and infill will occur in areas with existing adequate infrastructure. This is a quote from the GIZ application, "and away from sensitive resource areas." That's a quote. I didn't make it up. It's in the GIZ application, okay? So it says that development, redevelopment, infill will occur in areas with existing adequate infrastructure and away from sensitive resource areas. I wanna know how this property at thirty-five Scudder Ave qualifies for the GIZ. Quite simply put, if this property does not contain the infrastructure to be in the GIZ and you approve the GIZ as presented, then the entire GIZ will be a fraud, a sham, and a farce because your intentions will be good, but the execution will be a contradiction to the major intent, which is to put density where the infrastructure can support it. That is the intent of a growth activity zone and an economic activity zone. We have the still executive director, I believe, and the new executive director of the Cape Cod Commission sitting right behind me. And they will tell you that that map that Elizabeth showed just a little while ago with the cape, with those little yellow dots that were on it throughout, and she said this is the first time that, you know, there's other GIZs elsewhere and the first time this is being renewed. They have spent the last six, seven, eight, ten years trying to get economic activity centers in places where the infrastructure will support it, away from places that can't support it. That's a huge planning triumph for anybody who's ever been involved in planning. I totally am supportive of that, but this doesn't comply. It doesn't qualify. The GIZ is a vital planning tool for the town if the basis of it is sound. And it's critical that the foundation of the GIZ, being the land that is included in it, has the attributes required. Adding thirty-five Scudder Ave violates its core principle and therefore calls its validity into question. I think of the GIZ like a recipe or a spec sheet that smartly, efficiently, and equitably controls and enhances growth in this village. But adding thirty-five Scudder Ave to it would be like building an all-brick house and subbing cardboard bricks for just a little corner of it. They look like brick, but they don't act like brick in the long term. Nobody here would do that. Frankly, any discussion of the intended use of this parcel is not of our concern tonight. I agree with you totally. This public hearing concerns only the renewal of the GIZ application, and I suggest there are many more questions you may wish to ask in addition to the one that I have just posed. Have you had time to read all one hundred and twenty pages of it? If not, I hope you move to continue this hearing so that you have time to address not only the map. That's not the only question. It's not the only issue. A lot of the GIZ, the entire GIZ application is new. You can't put this new application next to the original application and do a redline version. It won't work because the whole conceptual basis of it is new. And that's a good thing. Progress is a good thing. But there are other areas that need to be addressed. Capital improvements, financing structures and options. There's a lot of new stuff in there that we haven't considered before. Possible changes in zoning, downzoning again. We went from fourteen to seven, and now there's a proposal maybe to go down to four or five. Form-based zoning, not-use-based zoning. This town doesn't do a form-based zoning now. Do we know what it is? Do we know where it would be applied? Do we know what the effects would be? Do we know if it's good in the Harbor District and not on North Street? But maybe it's good on North Street but not the Harbor District? You okay?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. There's lots of questions to ask, and I hope you understand. I hope you get the information so that you can make a good thing. One other thing, density goes up. That's the whole point of these economic and activity centers. We wanna make them more dense. Adding this parcel is sprawl. We don't want sprawl in downtown Hyannis. We already have sprawl on one-thirty-two, and we're trying to get rid of it and make it something else so it doesn't look like sprawl anymore. So I hope that you'll get the answer to the question, "What infrastructure does this parcel have that allows it?" Now, magically, four, five years later, when Planning Board said no, and originally, when everybody in the town said no, all of a sudden magically, it's got some new infrastructure that qualifies it to be in the GIZ. I don't think so. To vote the GIZ renewal application with the existing boundaries, thumbs up. Go for it. Excellent thing to do. To vote it with that parcel, shame on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening, councilors and Planning Board. My name is Todd DeLuca. I am the relatively new president and CEO of the Hyannis Chamber of Commerce. And the Board of Directors asked me to come tonight and express to you their enthusiastic support of authorizing the town manager to apply for the growth incentive zone again as presented. And I wanted to also thank Elizabeth for her hard work in creating this plan. I won't go into the detail that my, the former speakers spoke about to support this, but clearly, it seems to me that there's plenty of oversight in place to take care of the growth incentive zone after it's approved. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, Elizabeth Whorf-Bain, executive director of the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District. And we, I just want to relay a similar sentiment that Todd just did about supporting the growth incentive zone and the Planning and Development Department. I know Elizabeth Jenkins has put a vast amount of hard work and energy into reauthorizing the growth incentive zone. I personally have been to at least three meetings that are public meetings. I've been to a forum that was stakeholders. I did an online questionnaire. I've seen articles in the paper. I think she's done an exhaustive, you know, outreach to try to talk about this new piece and garner the excitement from the community. We are all really excited about having such a great collaborative working relationship with the town and with Mark Ells and with all of you. And we know that, I think, on your top five priorities is economic development in the town and specifically really in the downtown area, which one of our speakers said, "Hyannis needs it," and it does. And it needs a real concerted strategic effort of all people... And it needs a real concerted strategic effort of all people getting involved and coming up with best practices and new ideas and home run hits for the downtown to counteract some of the issues that have been expressed. We all know what needs to be done. And I think the teamwork, we see such a great team coming forth, and, you know, just all of us together should really bond together and say, let's join this team and bring in five fabulous things into the downtown. And so I think, you know, helping the resort and conference center be a better, you know, anchor for the downtown, which is what it is. It's an anchor, and it could be so much better whatever it becomes, and we know there's some great ideas out there. But there's so many more great ideas, and we hope that people will, you know, come forth and be supportive of them. So moving forward, we're very supportive of the Growth Incentive Zone, the new application and enlarging it. And we have total trust in the Cape Cod Commission and in Elizabeth Jenkins and in their recommendation. I believe they've worked together on this. So this isn't out of the blue at all. This is really carefully thought through. So we just want to say we support it, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak?
President, member of the town council and the planning board, I'm John Allen, and executive director of the John F. Kennedy Hyannis Museum. And I really want to add our support, my support, to the decision on adding that part of the Growth Incentive Zone to the big picture for Main Street. We live Main Street, and we are proud of the relationship we have with the town and the bid and all that goes on to make it such a vital part and frankly make it, I think, the Cape Cod, Main Street of Cape Cod. You know, the expansion makes sense because as times go on, the ability to bring all the forces together, the resources together to make the best decisions come out with what really will make it more dynamic, more vital, and more relevant for living or having a job or visiting Cape Cod. I think it's a major component of where we're going and being in the business of visitor and being around and listening to people. This is an important place. And the only way we can make it better is to do the things that make it relevant for people of all ages, to either have careers here, visit here, or find us a place to visit and shop. I think the fact of the planning and development and the town and Barnstable leaders together make the practices of Hyannis in this Growth Incentive Zone very relevant, very attractive, and will appeal to bringing in other opportunities to make it more vibrant and relevant to the people who are here and who will be living here. It makes sense to expand it. It fits to have the right types of oversight and involvement to make good decisions. And I really thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts and totally support the expansion of that Growth Incentive Zone.
Thank you very much. If anyone else wishes to speak? There always comes a time in the public hearing where we might start getting into repetitious things, so we're looking for anything new that hasn't been said. So anyone?
Ed O'Toole, Centerville. First, I'd like to wish you a good evening, town council and planning board. Second, I'd like to associate myself with everything that Felicia Penn said so eloquently. I will not, I'll try not to repeat what others have said. First, I'd hope that the town council and the planning board would vote not to extend the boundaries of the GIZ, certainly at this time. The residents whose, I'll try to speak for those who will be most affected by this. The residents whose lives and properties will be most affected by any development that might be orchestrated need to play a greater part in the future of their neighborhood than they've had the opportunity to do so far. To remove any possibility to study this in detail, in other words, by removing the Cape Cod Commission from any process that might be involved, would be a disservice not just to the residents of the neighborhood, but to all of us. After all, any proposal that would be worthy certainly should be able to pass and meet and surpass the standards of the Cape Cod Commission and the town. We were told that the Cape Cod Commission is now working more hand-in-hand with the town. What are we worried about? If a particular project is going to exceed Cape Cod Commission thresholds, why be concerned about its involvement? Protecting the interests of residents and preserving the quality of life that they enjoy now is so crucial to this. By voting to extend the GIZ, we're being shortsighted, unfair, and disdainful toward the people whose lives will be forever altered by making too hasty a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Esther Kateff. I live at 12 Hill Street. The end of my street.
Can you just repeat your name one more time?
Esther Kateff.
Thank you.
I, we may have to do a little bit of imagining here because my speech involved more than what we're allowed to speak about.
Right. We can't do any imagining. We're just sticking with what's actually up tonight.
Given that, um, thank you. I'm a member of the Stewart's Creek area, and I have bought the golf course and the creek that Oceanside Entertainment has bought, as they have said earlier in the presentation.
Parcel hasn't been bought, just clarification.
Is that right? Whatever is being built or will be built in this parcel that has been added or is being talked about being added, will bring people from all over the Cape. That's exciting, the way people have come up and mentioned it from the business group, also from, who else came up here? That talked about how wonderful this is for Hyannis. And I think from their perspective, it is. But how many of those five people that came up to speak about what a wonderful thing this will be for Hyannis live in the area, are neighbors of this parcel of land? Elizabeth talked about the survey, and I filled out that survey, quite extensive survey for suggestions to improve the downtown and the surrounding areas. In the survey, I suggested areas of concern. One might even say blight on Main Street, West Main Street, Route 132, where there are aging strip malls and empty storefronts. Why would the town choose to encroach on a neighborhood? Why not improve on existing commercial space where businesses can thrive without a burden placed on the very families and income level that Hyannis is trying to keep and attract? Given the goals that Elizabeth mentioned in the infrastructure and amenities, I think that a few of them were water resources, transportation, and traffic neighborhoods and open space. None of these are, all of these are negatively impacted by whatever might be developed on that parcel. It is a small neighborhood, and it is dense. I didn't understand everything Felicia Penn said, but I agree with her assessment. And at the same time, I appreciate the, the people who talked about not being worried about the extra, and the continued regulation and protection of the creek and other resources there. However, I ask you, councilors and other people here, for a moment to imagine that a major parcel in your neighborhood might be developed. What are your concerns? What are your worries? What are your hopes? I hope that you would both represent that neighborhood and its concerns vigorously and question the rationale and scope of any kind of project that would sit in the backyard of a community on a creek that would eliminate open space and is directly across from another performance venue. I appreciate your time and your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with something that hasn't been stated already?
I'm Jan Rap. Nice to be speaking to you, although I don't know the correct manner of address, but I will suggest that nobody has pointed out that the picture on the left and the picture on the right are only different in one way, the extension, right? The picture on the left is what currently the town of Barnstable is in charge of. The picture on the left has got Main Street with what we all agree is quite a bit of blight, right? This is what we're in charge of, and we want to add some more to that? I'd question that. I think we need that other level. I wouldn't denigrate your work at all. It's your job. I'm glad you did a good job, but I think you should think twice about that. I live at 239 Main Street. And the other thing I wanted to say was I support Felicia's assertions in every way and the other man who came up here. And the last thing I want to say is that one of the things about Hyannis is the beauty of the transportation and the walkability up here. When we're talking about adding a parcel like this, it should be residential. I think you should put double the number of houses there, cluster, leave a little open space, whatever. I don't care what you come up with, but it's going to be developed, so forget about that argument. But put people there that can walk to where they're going. They don't have to get in their cars, you know? Let's do that. Let's not bring five million cars that come and go. I don't like that idea, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Well, there's a lot of talking going on over here. My name is Chris Berto Barrero, owner of Alberta's Restaurant in downtown Hyannis. I think one thing that we all need to think about is jobs for the employees who live here. I think any development that goes on that property, be whatever they might determine now, later down the future, is going to be positive for downtown Hyannis. If it's going to happen one way, be an added to the WIZ, or going to Cape Cod Commission, it'll all get developed. It'd be nice to cut through some of the red tape and get it done, not make it wait five, six, seven more years. But, you know, the employees who live here need jobs. The economy dies down at the end of the season. Anything that gets developed in downtown that creates jobs and creates more for the employees who live here that can make a little bit in the off-season so they can afford to stay here? Everybody's moving off Cape. They can't afford to live here. They don't make enough, no matter what industry is here. We don't have an industry besides tourism. After the season, it's gone. So if you're saying we want to build that parcel and put something else, let's do it for the right reasons. You want to put houses in there? Bring more people down here that only take from the resources that we have? They're not out working. They already have made their money. They're living it. Yes, they're going out and spending, and everybody will benefit from it, but we need jobs for the year-round community. So I look at it in that sense that it would be positive to have something that does offer. And I think some development like that, no matter what it is, is going to create year-round jobs, not just summer jobs. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Madam Chair?
Could I also have a motion to close the public hearing? Second? All in favor? Okay, the public meeting is closed.
Both public hearings are closed. What is your pleasure, Madam Chair?
At this point, I'd like to make a motion and a vote to continue the matter to the planning board meeting on February 12th of, at 7:00.
Second. I'll give that motion.
Second? Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. So I'd like a vote for, to move this motion for the, until February 20, February, excuse me, February 12th. So moved.
Adam President?
Yes.
I came prepared to address the...
Oh, you need to, the microphone.
I came to address the town council and our planning board, too. I came, wasn't planning on coming, but we did need a forum. Felicia Penn mentioned that she was on the board back when this was established. I also was. We were, the planning board was a big force in doing this and putting this together. I have no qualms about the document, the draft document. Whoever's put it together has done a tremendous job.
Sorry to interrupt. I think since you voted to continue this, you meeting on the 12th, the discussion stops there, and you'll be able to discuss it at your meeting. But you've already taken a vote.
That's correct.
So. SIPS of Planning Board is going to continue their deliberation at the February 12th meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion from the council that we continue our deliberation to our February 15th meeting. I have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? And that's unanimous. This item will continue to our February 15th meeting.
Great. And that concludes our planning board meeting.
Thank you. Yes, and both public hearings have been closed. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
All right. We'll take two minutes. Let the room clear out here so we can hear each other. Like to clear the chamber, please. I have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? And that's unanimous. This item will continue to our February 15th meeting.
Great, and that concludes our planning board meeting.
Thank you. Yes, and both public hearings have been closed. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right. We'll take two minutes. Let the room clear out here so we can hear each other.
[inaudible]
I'm waiting on a quorum. I need my counselors back. Phil, that means you, chit-chatting away. Counselor Neary's coming back. Counselor Hebert. I'm sure. Excuses, excuses. You had enough time. You chose to talk. All right, we're going to get the, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I have a quorum, so I'm going to start the meeting up. Just wanted to have the conversations, please be taken outside of the room. All right, so we're going to go back to old business. Give you guys two minutes, and it's like I can't get you back. All right, we're going to go back to old business. Vice President Crocker, could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018-054?
Yes, Mr. President. Order to amend, 2018-054, order to amend Chapter 168 Regulatory Agreement District Maps to include map 311 Parcel O92, that's map 311 Parcel O92, into a public hearing.
Thank you very much, and this item, we did have a presentation at the last meeting for the council, so we're just bringing this back basically for the public hearing, but Elizabeth, if you want to do a quick overview?
Sure. Again, thank you. Counselors, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. So again, this item looks at what properties are eligible to apply, negotiate, and enter into regulatory agreements with the town. So as I explained last time, the regulatory agreements really are a unique tool in the kind of planning and zoning landscape that are authorized by the Cape Cod Commission Act and adopted by the town, and they allow the town and an applicant or developer to enter into an agreement to negotiate and establish the permitted uses, densities of a property, and really all other aspects of how it's developed, and in which it also allows the town to negotiate with the developer about certain public benefits provided in that agreement. So I think all of the regulatory agreements that we've done to date have been within the boundaries of the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, but as we see on the map, the, there is a different geography, a different applicability to where you can do a regulatory agreement. That map expands beyond the existing and proposed GIZ boundary. So I think, again, as you all know, the Cape Town Plaza property, which is owned by the town, in the custody and control of the airport, is controlled by a long-term lease, which expires in 2024, and in anticipation of this expiration, the town has been working diligently with the airport on the possibility of issuing a request for proposals for future lease rights on the property. Again, being a public parcel does have to go through a procurement process to establish who those development rights will go to in the future. So as the town and airport work through this process, certainly it's in our interest to promote the highest and best use of that property consistent with our local comprehensive plan, and in most cases, we look to our local zoning to establish those uses, and I think as perhaps you know, we are working on a rezoning proposal focused on our regional retail centers that we hope to move forward, but again, the regulatory agreement is a unique tool that maximizes flexibility for both the town and developers to promote the highest and best reuse of that property. Another aspect to this is that the parcel is not within the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, so any redevelopment on that parcel would likely be subject to a development of regional impact with the Cape Cod Commission. A regulatory agreement, although I don't think we've ever exercised this, but there is the ability to enter into a three-party agreement between the town, the developer, and the Cape Cod Commission that would be provided by putting this within the regulatory agreement map as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, and this is a public hearing. Sorry, members of the public wish to speak? Now would be the time. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? All those opposed? No, that's unanimous. Okay. Counselor questions, discussion on this item? Did I hear a motion to move the question? I have a second. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is a majority vote. This is item 2018-054. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. Counselor Hebert, could you please read item 2018-058? I believe it's on page five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2018-058, Amendment to Section 241-17 of the Administrative Code Housing This may be acted upon this evening.
I have a second, and I believe we have our housing specialist, Arden Caden, for the rationale.
I'm using Arden Caden, Housing Coordinator for Planning and Development.
I don't know if the mic's on or maybe it needs to be a little closer?
On now. I think it's on now. Arden Caden, Housing Committee for Planning and Development Department, Housing Coordinator. This position staffs the housing committee, so it's in that capacity that I'm here tonight on behalf of the committee, seeking a change to the administrative code. The committee members are requesting this change in the composition of the committee by reducing the number of regular members from nine to five, as well as adding two alternate members who would be eligible to vote in the absence of regular members. The change in the code is requested due to the difficulty in achieving a quorum of the committee and thereby rendering the committee ineffective. Currently, there are four vacancies of this committee, which actually brings this issue of difficulty of quorum to light, but it also provides us an opportunity to reduce the number to five at this time because we have only five acting regular members right now. But of course, as we're in the process of reviewing the code to make these changes, we found some additional changes and updates that really would serve the admin code to make at this time. So these additional changes are really to better reflect the current role of the housing committee and to align it more with its mission. Mainly, those two changes are, one, adding the statement that the committee acts as the local housing partnership. So that statement is in the mission statement, and they have been acting in that capacity for at least as long as I have been here, and what that means is that they review and endorse any local initiative program application that comes before the town. And then we also removed any reference to enforcement of fair housing laws, as it's not really a role that the committee is involved in. It's much more of a legal issue. And then those changes then needed to be carried through into the interrelationships with the Town Council and the Town Manager, so those revisions were made to reflect these changes as well. So it looks like a lot of changes, but it's not really. So tonight, we are requesting your support to the changes to the admin code for the housing committee.
Thank you very much, and we've done something similar with some other committees that were having quorum issues to make sure they're able to, you know, do their business on a monthly, you know, their monthly meeting. Any counsel questions, discussion on this item? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. Arden, I totally understand the need to have a workable number for this committee. I do have some concerns about the elimination of the language on the fair housing, and I understand that enforcement may not be the function of this committee, but where does that reside? Where does that function reside, and do we currently have a town fair housing policy?
We don't, I don't think, have a town fair housing policy. Our federal CDBG program has a fair housing plan that they need to abide by. The county has a, as you probably know, a Barnstable County Human Rights Committee that will accept complaints, and they research those complaints, but the most real complaints go to either the State Commission Against Discrimination, the Attorney General's Office, or Housing and Urban Development.
So I understand that there's a process if someone has a complaint about fair housing, but I think the, I'm guessing the original intent to include this language was to be proactive in creating fair housing in the community, and I was struck by a session that I attended on the Cape Housing Institute on how, you know, years and years of housing laws have really created an unfair housing situation in our communities, and I'm just a little concerned by removing this language and if it's not put anywhere else, that we're kind of losing the teeth and perhaps the focus on fair housing.
I mean, that's a fair point. I just don't think a group of five volunteers with no real potentially background in that issue is the right group to dapple in some pretty serious legal interpretations and enforcement.
Any other counselors? Counselor Hebert?
I want to add one other thing. I've been here more than seven years, and I've never received a complaint, a discrimination concern. I've received issues between landlord-tenant issues, looking for tenant rights, but I've never personally received a discrimination referral.
Just to kind of clarify that, thank you, Mr. President. We have certainly, and I have distributed a number of times, the HUD and also the Department of Justice, clear statement on fair housing and anti-discrimination when it comes to housing issues, and I have tons of copies of those, and I sleep with them if anybody wants any. And then we've also been working very diligently to get a housing court here on Cape Cod, and we've made great strides, and Town Manager has really assisted in making that happen, and so I think that we're going to be seeing some, they're definitely coming, and finances are there, and we desperately need that housing court here on Cape Cod, so I'm thrilled about that. And then I think it's important to understand that we are, the housing committee and on the liaison to it, is really for advisory, and it is not, does not have any authority on its own. It's only advisory to this council and to the Town Manager is the function of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Vice President Crocker?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment if I could. I'm in, on page five, I, it says the Town Council, and it goes on about the housing committee interacting with the Town Council to provide advice, and it reads on until you get after Mass General, Chapter 40B, subsection 20-23. I'd like to take the next sentence and try to offer an amendment in it, if I may. It says, "The council, the committee meets," and I'd like to strike annually for more frequently or more frequently as is necessary with. I'd like to strike that line and insert, "to prepare information for the Town Council." Add the word "and," "and to appraise the Town Council of issues pertaining to affordable housing discussions with..." The way it's written, it suggests that we must have an annual meeting or more frequently as someone sees fit, and there's no one identified as the someone. And "to change our agenda based on somebody's supposition that they have the right to call us out or to call in, when they can come through a liaison, come to a meeting, they can be asked to be put on the agenda." That seems to be more appropriate with the way we handle all of our advisory committees, not just this one. So it's just a wordsmithing to ensure that we don't obligate ourselves to something that may be more difficult than we're prepared to handle and more difficult than we offer out to other advisory groups.
Can you, okay, we have a second. Do you want to just read that one more time to clear it up?
Yes, so if everybody knows where I am, I'm right after the Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, subsection 20-23. So I'm working on the very next sentence. It says, "the committee meets. I am offering to strike annually or more frequently as is necessary with..." So if you strike that line right there and you insert, "to prepare information for," and then it would go on to the Town Council, and you'd insert the word "and," "to apprise the Town Council of issues pertaining to affordable housing and discussion policies and evaluate fair and affordable housing in the town." So it's a, it's an insertion that it's clear that they're advisory to us, that they work to prepare the information for us, and, Mr. President, and the reporting section of our meeting would allow everybody to come forward, but there would be no suggestion of a mandatory meeting or more, which frequently as necessary is undecided to me. So I think this is a good offering for a compromise and for an amendment to this paragraph, and I offer it as an amendment.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have an amendment, and I have a second. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? Go ahead.
Point and question? Does the housing committee currently meet annually, and this would reduce that to just a preparation of a report, or is that it's, this would be an addition by putting?
If I may, Mr. President, the chair, and anybody who wants to bring with him, has reported twice in the last two or three years. They've come and just given a report, but we meet, we meet monthly, actually, but in terms of reporting, and I agree with Counselor Crocker, that I think changing this verbiage is very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item?
All the questions.
All those in favor moving the question?
[inaudible]
Yeah, I know. Moving the question, moving the amendment. So this, so the amendment, so we moved the amendment. All those in favor of the proposed amendment? And that is unanimous. And Madam Clerk, did you get the verbiage on that? Okay.
Good.
She's a super-duper member of the society. Need you ask.
The award-winning town clerk.
[inaudible]
I have a motion to move the question?
As amended.
As amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. This is item 2018-058. All those in favor of this item as amended. And that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rapoport said, could you please read item 2018-060?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business, may be acted upon. Item 2018-060, Appointments to a Board Committee or Commission. Resolve that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board, committee, or commission. Old Kings Highway Historic District Commission, Polly Brazelton, Barnstable, is an alternate member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. Shellfish Committee, Patricia Farina, Hyannis, is a regular member, holding a family permit to a term expiring 6/30/2020. Water Quality Advisory Committee, Barry Gals, Katuwa, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Kyle Evanco, Barnstable, is an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2018, as written.
I have a second. Any discussion on this item?
Questions.
All those in favor moving the question? Unanimous. This is item 2018-060, Appointments to a Board Committee Commission. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Moving back into new business, Counselor Hebert, could you please read item 2018-059A?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2018-059A, a ratification of a vote approving the Housing Development Zone and the Zone Plan for Submission to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
I have a second. In this item, obviously, we voted on this at the last meeting, I believe it was unanimous, but there was some information we just wanted to clarify, so we just wanted to bring it back to get that information and ratify the vote. So we have Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development, again.
Hi, thank you again. Good evening, and as President Stein Hilbert just stated, we do think we need to provide an important— an important clarification on a matter that was directly discussed at the prior meeting related to the Housing Development Incentive Program. I think it was certainly fundamental, to my understanding, and I'm sure to yours, of how this program will function and will reflect the applications you see coming forward under this program at the council. So the issue is that, under the H-DIP Housing Development Incentive Program, there are two types of incentives provided, authorized under that. So the first one being the option for a local tax increment exemption, a TIE agreement. So, again, relief from the property, the local property taxes that the town changes based on the additional assessed value that results from redeveloping a property, much like our TIF, Tax Increment Financing, that's authorized under the Economic Development Incentive Program, the EDIP. So this would be essentially a residential option for that. The second one is, of course, the state tax credits, the $10 million of funded tax credits that are out there for developers that they're allowed to pursue. So we were asked, and we had the understanding, I think, from DHCD, based on our initial pre-application meetings with them, that these two items were mutually exclusive, that a developer could pursue a tax credit application without having gone to the council to look for that local tax increment relief. And, in fact, we were incorrect about that. I want to sincerely apologize for the misunderstanding. We did talk to DHCD, and they did provide us with a clarification that, in fact, those two are not mutually exclusive. In fact, the grant of a local tax increment agreement is, in fact, a prerequisite for a developer to apply for the state tax credit. You can go the other way. You can get a tax increment and not apply for the credit, but it doesn't work the other way around. So, again, we had a misunderstanding with DHCD. We did want to clarify that. So I did just want to provide a little bit more follow-up information. I believe we talked about this, but certainly seen in a different light with the understanding that we may see these proposals going forward. In terms of the program guidelines, certainly, I think DHCD has to approve, in addition to the local approval, DHCD has to approve the tax increment exemption. So they would be looking for projects that would, of course, meet the overall goals of the program to support market rate housing. I'm sorry, I should have, the program, obviously, provides these incentives for the creation of market rate housing in support of economic development and neighborhood stabilization. So those are kind of general guidelines. More specific guidelines related to the increment are the percentages. They do put some bounds on that. So in terms of the relief that could be granted, the minimum would be a 10% tax relief, the maximum would be 100%. And, again, that's on the increment, based on the existing and projected increase in the tax value. And the time that increment could be applied to is no less than five years and no more than 20 years. So you have a kind of parameters there, 10% and 100% relief, five years and 20 years. And the increment can change within an existing application, and, of course, over applications, it can differ. So, again, we did think this was an important consideration. Again, I sincerely apologize for misrepresenting it. Certainly, we had a misunderstanding. Again, no other parameters of the application of the program has changed, but we ask for a ratification of the vote based on this understanding.
Thank you for clarifying that information. Is there any discussion on this item? Counselor Flores?
Just a quick question. I'm curious, who actually has the responsibility to certify the projects to get the credit from a developer?
So it's a multi-step process. The town has to sponsor the project, and then we're the ones who negotiate that increment with them. There's a preliminary certification that DHCD provides based on the parameters of the program, and then a final certification that they need to get from DHCD for the tax credits.
They set the criteria.
For the tax credits, yeah. Again, as it relates to the local tax increment exemption, something we did discuss last time, much like our TIF program, one of the options that I think we would recommend would be the adoption of guidelines for that. Again, based on the broad parameters, or I guess not the broad, but the fairly specific parameters of this, you know, we would want to think about this, how this program would be applied in our community. So, for example, on the commercial side, you know, we look for projects that, you know, produce jobs that are consistent with our local comprehensive plan, that are located within economic activity centers. So similar guidelines for the TIE, the tax, the residential agreements could be spelled out.
Well, I think you made a point that was important to me, i.e. establishing criteria so when these decisions are made, they're not arbitrary, that there is a specific set of rules and regs that we follow to show that, obviously, we're transparent, and at the same time, also being sure that all developers are treated equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you. So my question as a new counselor is, what is the process to develop those guidelines? And at what point does the council have any conversation about that? Or is our vote tonight, you know, that's it? Off it goes?
No, I think certainly the guidelines would be yours. I mean, that's fiscal policy that I think would be critical for yours to set. So while we're certainly here to provide assistance in terms of the process and what those may look like, you know, I do think that they would have to be, we would have to have input from that council, whether it be through a subcommittee process, like, again, we do for the, for the commercial TIFs. I think that's how I would envision that working. But, again, it would be, it would be really a policy document.
My, my concern is, my understanding of the timing of this is, once we approve at the local level and it goes up to DHCD, developers can start to, you know, approach the town to start negotiating those. And so I'm wondering, once we have voted tonight, how do we have assurance that there is going to be a process in place? Because that's a fairly wide variance, 10%, five years to 100% 20 years, and I think...
So how do we make those determinations? Who gets the 100? Who gets the 100? I think are very important.
And the HD zone that has been selected, which, you know, mirrors pretty much our GIZ, does include some waterfront property, does, you know, and to what extent does the town need to incentivize market rate development that probably would be built without an additional tax incentive?
Certainly, I think that, again, would be a primary question, again, much like the EDIP, that demonstration of need, the "but for," as we refer to it, not necessarily something addressed under here, but I think would be a conversation we would have to have. In terms of the process, while it does allow for immediate negotiation, it is a process that allows full local control. So we could certainly work with the developer and say, you know, we are going to go through this process to adopt these guidelines prior to entertaining applications.
Vice President Crocker?
Hi, thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you for working on this. The clarity is going to help us produce some good development agreements, which are very important as we go forward. Following up on Counselor Schnep's issue, though, and staying right on point with what it costs the town to be in this program. If an applicant comes to us and we start to review their process under this, and we've already told the state we're game, we're committed to 10% to 100%, we're committed to five to 20 years. If the program doesn't, or if the development opportunity doesn't seem to lend itself for the neighborhood, doesn't work with us as counselors as we negotiate, is there any appeal process for them, for us, to give them a no, and for them to rush up to the state, get a yes, and then we're obligated to give tax incentives to a program that we're not particularly fond of?
Sure. The program is designed so that the TIE is a local option agreement. Again, it is a prerequisite to moving forward to DHCD. There, if, again, but, but that, it is under the purview of this council, whether or not to grant those agreements. There is no appeal to DHCD in the program. I actually spoke with DHCD today and got clarification with them on this issue. So it is, again, the language in there is local option. So it is, the town really does become the gatekeeper.
So to be purposely clear, because you and I had this discussion today, to get this clarity now that we're revisiting this whole issue, if the development, even though we're petitioned under this criteria, if the development is not acceptable and doesn't get this board's approval, it goes no further, there's no option for the state to override us, there's no, it's, the deal's dead.
That's correct. There is no appeal to the state, and they would be precluded from pursuing that tax credit.
And the 10% at five is the minimum we're going to offer everyone who we accept the deal for, and we make every deal as we see fit. And lastly, again, you hit on it, but we use the buzzword new growth dollars. The 10% is only on the new growth dollars, which is started by the development opportunity, as I understand it.
Yes.
That's the amount over its present assessment.
Correct. I'm sorry, yes, the increment, the new growth dollars.
Yeah, we always, between all of us, we talk about new growth dollars and what it means to our town. So I hope that's clear, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarity.
Anyone else? Counselor Flores?
I'm still a little confused in terms of, you suggest that we can have a developer come in, and collectively, we would determine what the criteria might be, as opposed to having criteria or guidelines before a developer actually approaches us.
I apologize if I was unclear. No, I mean, again, the guidelines will be yours, but I would strongly encourage having those in place before entertaining any application.
I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Similar to the TIF, where we have guidelines, but we can negotiate once you're into the negotiation. Yep, yep, very similar. Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Elizabeth, though, can you clarify? If, it doesn't have to always be new construction, it could also be used to repair or to enlarge an existing home. You know, the neighborhood stabilization. So if there's a house that's in very bad condition, then a developer comes forward with a plan to repair and expand a facility that would benefit a neighborhood, they could qualify for this. Is that correct?
It does allow for the rehabilitation of existing property, yes. The program was actually revised recently to additionally allow new construction.
How will we advertise that to potential developers?
Well, certainly, one of the steps we took to get here was a public hearing on this process, and we did direct outreach to the development community to make them aware of this. But certainly, as we continue to do, our planning outreach advocacy through a number of forums. This is a unique tool that the town of Barnstable is able to offer. There are no other gateway cities on Cape Cod or the islands. So, again, this is a unique opportunity in Barnstable, and certainly, that's something we'll want to highlight in our Housing and Economic Development programs going forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Rapgrasseti?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? All those opposed? One in opposition. This is item 2018-059A. All those in favor of this item? All those opposed? All those abstain? One abstention. All right. Counselor Flores, could you please read item 2018-061? I believe it's on page 11.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business that may be acted upon. It is item number 2018-061. It is the authorization to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $124,596 to the Barnstable Senior Services Division from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to support staff salaries and programs of the Barnstable Senior Center, as written.
I have a second, and we have Lynn Poynter, our Director of Community Services, here. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you for reading that so well. I'm not going to repeat the numbers. I will tell you that each year, especially for our new counselors, each year, the State Office of Elder Affairs gives the town, based upon the 2010 census, in two years, it will be the 2020 census, dollar amount per senior in the town. So we have 12,845 seniors that are over the age of 60 in the town. This budget represents a 3% reduction from what we've received previously. It's gone from $10 to $9.70 per senior. The staffing that it pays for is our activity coordinator, our marketing coordinator, and it also partially funds our transportation coordinator and custodian positions. In addition, it helps us with some of our operating expenses, which includes our newsletter. And we, we're getting some maintenance money for our Silver Express vehicles, but because of the reduction in money, we were fortunate to get some money from the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, which has worked to help us with that money. Madeline Noonan did ask that I let you know that Governor Baker announced during his State of the State address that he would be increasing state support to the Councils on Aging in the FY19 Budget to the highest level ever. His proposed FY19 budget includes funding to increase the formula grant to $12 per elder, which would be a significant increase from the $9.70 that we received this year. If the increase is approved by the legislature, it would result in almost $30,000 of additional funding for the FY19 grant.
Great. Thank you very much. Any counselor discussion or questions on this item? Do I have a motion to move?
Could I ask who wrote the grant?
Who wrote the grant?
We, it's a grant that's done by the state, but Madeline Noonan and Donna Burns, who's our Assistant Senior Services Director, work hand-in-hand with the state.
Please thank them for us.
All right. Now I'll take the motion.
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? This is item 2018-061. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that does end the orders of the day. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, February 15th, 2018. Vice President Crocker?
Yes, Mr. President. I move we go into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21-2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with a non-union employee, Mark Els, and not to reconvene an open session thereafter.
Madam Clerk, may we have the roll?
Should we vote yes or no? If you want to state.
Counselors, Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Steinheilberg?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bedenbender?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.